Good evening. Welcome to the June 13th meeting of the RA Board of Directors. This is a work session that we are holding tonight. Let me make sure we have quorum here. I see all the board members are here. So having established quorum, let's move on with our agenda. I have, just, just, excuse me. I have just a couple of comments that I wanted to share with the board. These are just opening remarks from my side. As many of you remember, we had the Lake Thoreau pool opening on Saturday, May 25th. It was a great event and thank you for the board members who were there. Director Farrell, Director Dodd, Director Vice President Crywarch, Director Santa, and others who were there, and Mac and staff and everybody else. We had a, we had a good, we had a good event. It went really well. And I've been getting some feedback from people, from the members who've been using the pool. They're very impressed with, with, with the new design, with the new pool, and they love it. And I can even hear them as I drive by. The next one is the Shadowwood reopening, and that's on Saturday, this coming Saturday, June 15th. We've invited all the board members and many other previous board members to attend. We'll find out how many will be able to do that. I encourage you to attend if you can. I believe, Mac, we're starting at 10:30-ish AM?
10:30.
10:30. Two other minor comments. These are just reminders for us, for all of us. I really appreciate that anybody who contacts staff, please make sure that you CC SLT as well. Mac, Peter, and if appropriate, Ed, CFO. Just let them know so that they're aware. And also, when, if anybody is contacted by media reporters for comments and things of that nature, please make sure that you coordinate with the president and CEO and the director of communications. This is not to stop you from talking. This is just mostly to coordinate and make sure we are on the same talking points and the same message. And-
Mr. President, on that point, can I ask you a question?
Thank you. Yes.
Let's see. When we say, when we send an email to directors, right? That goes to all of us. Also, our CEO is copied-
Yeah.
-on that. Our COO is copied on that. But is our CFO and our director of communications copied on that?
So the Board of Directors email distribution lists are all elected directors. Myself, Peter as the COO, Tony Champ as general counsel, and Brittany.
Okay. So if it's an issue, so if it's an issue that might fall in, our CFOs, Baileywick or Communications, it would be wise for us to add them as a CC so that they're aware of the, or the traffic that's going around?
Yes, if that's the intent of the board member, obviously, if something comes to me, then I'll decide how to distribute it, you know, as well.
Yep.
No, I just wanted, I just wanted to know who, when I use, when I use that address, who's getting it?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Those are all of my comments. And with that, let's just move to our agenda. First of all, we need to approve the June 13th board work session agenda, which is the agenda we have tonight. Any motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It seems to be unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is member comments. Brittany, do we have any member comments tonight?
We have Mr. Nathanson on this evening.
Okay. Mr. Nathanson, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Nathanson, you've been asked to unmute. Mr. Nathanson, you've been asked to unmute.
Okay.
I'm not getting a response from Mr. Nathanson at this time.
Maybe- Anything?
He says that he has unmuted, but obviously, we're having issues hearing him.
Well, his, his name still says that it's muted.
That's what I was gonna ask. Does it still show on your end that it's muted?
It does.
Yes.
Okay, so he, I know that when you ask someone to unmute, if they unmute at the same time, it actually remutes them. So potentially, you both hit the button at the same time.
Mr. Nathanson, I'm going to unmute you. You've just been unmuted. Still showing muted.
Is it 18 and 19?
That's next Tuesday, isn't it?
Still not unmuting.
Yeah, he may need to call in via the phone number for-
Yeah.
Let me go ahead and share it up with him. Okay. No response from him.
Please bear with us while we try to resolve these technical difficulties.
Mr. Nathanson, the phone number's been put in the chat, if you'd like to call in.
Can we see only comment?
Is he calling in?
Margaret has her hand raised. Margaret has her hand raised.
Yes. Director Perry.
I would like to make a member comment. If you'd like me to go ahead and make mine while we wait for Mr. Nathanson?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Margaret Perry, and as per allowed by resolution, my address has been provided to the board secretary.
Thank you.
I just want to thank all the RA board members and RA staff for allowing the conversation of the name change for the Shadowwood pool as requested by our members. Part of our jobs, in my opinion, has always been that we need to not only listen to our members, but that we need to actively take a role in addressing their concerns and requests. And so I appreciate us having the conversation, looking into, making the unofficial survey, all of those pieces of the puzzle of responding to our members. So while I appreciate some members thought that it was a waste of time, I feel the fact that we did it because members asked us to is doing our job. So I want to thank everyone at that table and all of the rest of RA staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we having any luck with Mr. Nathanson?
No. No.
No luck. Okay. Why don't we defer this to maybe the next time? And in the meantime, if-
He'd like to write us an email, potentially.
Yeah. If Mr. Nathanson would like to sort of provide an email with his topic of conversation, we could go with that as well until next time. Can you, Brittany, can we send that to him through chat, please? Thank you. Apologies, Mr. Nathanson, for the technical difficulties here. We'll certainly resolve that. Okay. What is the next?
Mr. President, I move to adopt the, oh, are we good?
Want to give it one more try?
Mr. Nathanson, if you're on the line, please dial star six to unmute. Mr. Nathanson?
Gotcha.
Uh huh, success. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Nathanson, you're, you're on. Please state your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
Yeah. Alan Nathanson, 2217 Double Eagle Park, Reston, Virginia.
It's echoing because he's talking on the phone and he doesn't have his computer muted. He needs to either change rooms from his computer or, or mute the computer.
Please go ahead, Mr. Nathanson.
Okay. In 21, 2021, the Parks Advisory Committee recommended a name change for Shadowwood and also made recommendations, I believe, for improvements. Okay? Based on this, this was after the decision was made to keep the pool open. When the decision by the Parks Committee, or Advisory Committee, to recommend a name change, we thought it was appropriate at that time to submit something in favor of that name change, and that was the basis of our name change. Nowhere in your sheet do I see the reason why the Advisory Committee indicated the name change. I was there, and it was based on the people that came from the surrounding clusters. So there was input at that time. Thank you for your time for speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Nathanson. Okay. Are there any other member comments, Brittany? Thank you. All right.
All right. Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second. All those in favor? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is CEO updates. Over to you, Mac.
Thank you, President Parr and members of the board. We were asked to provide a number of updates. I'll call them of an administrative nature, so you'll find all of that contained in the packet. The one thing that I would like to draw everybody's attention to, in our agenda-setting process, one of the things that I have noticed is that we set agendas, or someone asks for something on an agenda, or we defer something multiple months down the road. I thought it would be very helpful to create a parking lot of sorts, so you can see not just the draft agenda that you're going to be approving later tonight for the very next meeting, two weeks later, but what's coming over the next month or two. I think that will help you all see something that you might have particular interest in, but not know when it's coming. And it might just help everybody have a better sense of what the next several items are going to be. So that way, we don't lose track of items, and you can get a general sense and hopefully be more logical when you get to your approval of the agenda. So the way this really works is if you, let's say, at New Business, say, hey, I'd really like to see an agenda item, and our resolution refers that to President Parr and I to, to figure out the scheduling of, you'll see that show up in the parking lot for one of the subsequent meetings. So we're just gonna show them by month. It's not meant to be a draft agenda for all sorts of reasons. It's meant for you just to see the major topical items. So other than that, the rest of the CEO update is contained in the packet.
Are there any questions for, Mike? Yes, Director Farrell?
Mr. President, I have gotten multiple phone calls from members living in the Shadowwood area, my neighbors. As you all know, I live, I can walk to Shadowwood from my house. But a number of them, and I've shared this comment with Ms. Kowalski, are confused. The current schedule, and I understand we don't want to get the, operations are within the prerogative of the CEO, but I wanted us all to have the benefit of the comment that I'm getting, which is, you're spending all this money to heat Shadowwood Pool, and we're closing it, and yet we're keeping Thoreau Pool open after the Shadowwood Pool is closed. And to them, having spent the money to heat the pool, it doesn't make any sense. And I don't have a good explanation. And I have referred them to make contact with Ms. Kowalski and others. But if we're gonna spend the money that we're spending to heat the pool, it makes more sense to keep that pool open longer than a pool that isn't heated, so that more people can use a pool that's heated, extending theirs, that season for that pool. I want, it, it, Pool Pass scheduling was in the update. I don't, I'm not looking for a response tonight or now, but I wanted the staff to be aware of the input that this board member is receiving on that issue.
Thank you, Director Farrell. I believe a couple of board meetings ago, the same subject came up. We had a conversation with Peter, and would you like to kind of recite what, what you commented back then?
Just, just very quickly. So this is, Director Flashman brought this to us early in the year. Director Perry brought this to us a few meetings ago. Now Director Farrell's bringing it to us. So we, we have committed to evaluating the attendance at Shadowwood throughout the year and coming back with a recommendation midsummer. So we're, we plan to come back with something related to keeping Shadowwood open later at midsummer.
Yes, Director-
Just to follow up. So the possibility still exists that Shadowwood season will be extended?
It's, it's possible. As always, staffing could be an issue, but we are definitely evaluating it, and we'll make a recommendation to the board. We plan to do that, yeah.
That's everything I need.
Good. Thank you. All right. Yes, Vice President Crywarch.
Just while we're on the topic of pool schedules, just wanted to thank staff for the quick turnaround on the 13th and 14th. I did not make that motion, but it made a lot of sense to me when, when, when it was proposed, and thank you for pulling that together and making sure that we've got pools open for the kids, you know, today and tomorrow. The other thing I wanted to add was just a general note, piggybacking off of Mac's comments regarding the parking lot. Let's try to take it seriously as a board. I think it's a really good tool for us to be able to have those look-aheads, right? If we're adding content, let's be mindful of what we're adding it to, and do, do we have the ability to push something a little bit further down the road, right? So we keep a constant kind of agenda size. And the last thing would be, let's try as best we can, again, emergencies notwithstanding, keeping about a four-week buffer, if you will, between these really new items to allow staff an opportunity to put together either the video or the corresponding packet material, so that we're not just every two weeks changing something up on them that they have to flip around. So anyway-
That's evidently fair.
Yep. Those are the only comments I had on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I believe we are ready for volunteer interviews at this point. And I believe we've got two tonight. We have Julie Bitzer and Mickey Marvitz, both for PrAC. Okay?
Julie's been unmuted.
Thank you. My name is Julie Bitzer. There is no L in line, so-
I apologize, Julie. I, I didn't have-
It's okay.
I didn't have my glasses on.
I don't know what, so it's all right.
Director Farrell always tells me- Thank you.
It's perfectly fine. I live at 2020 Paperman Court, Reston, Virginia, and I am applying for a second three-year term for Parks Recreation Advisory Committee and also simultaneously as the chair of PrAC, to continue that role. Just a few sentences I'd like to share with you all. I apologize for my dogs, but I have out-of-town guests, so I couldn't come in person. So they might be barking, but we'll try. Live, work, play. Reston is a community of which Reston Association plays a role way beyond itself, as you all know. RA is the mainstay of our community. I have been actively engaged in Reston Association since being elected to the board in 2015. Our amenities are parks, our trails, pools, playfields, racket courts, and yes, even our lakes, to present a space where our diverse community can come together. Our amenities are and should be accessible and available to all. I applaud the board's action last year in the budget to, to make those recreation passes free by fully incorporating the expense and foregoing the revenue of those recreation passes into our annual assessment. To recap my RA resume, for those who might not know, Board of Directors for South Lakes from 2015 to 2021, VP 2019 to 2020, President 2020 to 2021, PrAC member and chair the last three years. And as the board liaison, PrAC was always one of my favored committees and one that I requested to be the board liaison for, along with Public Art Reston. I also supported working groups, lakes, boats, docks, the Recreation Facilities Working Group, and also, some of you may remember, the Lake House Working Group. So I am here tonight to ask the board to re-up my PrAC volunteer role, as well as the chair position. So might I answer any questions about my application?
Let me start with, with me first. Julie, I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. As I said, these are, as you can see, these are, these are called glasses here. And I sometimes forget to put them on, and-
No big deal.
First of all, thank you for your service to the board in the past many years. One question that I have for you is, as you think about PrAC, do you see any challenges coming up? Any big things that you are thinking about?
Yes, I, I do have some. Part of it is, in years past, we were able to have some members of PrAC that represented different activities that were, you know, their particular interest. We, at, at times, we had people who were tennis players or people who were very much into the pools and the aquatics. And I felt that those interests helped guide the rest of the committee with perspectives that we might not have. Like, I'm not a swimmer, so there's things that I don't, you know, really know about, but I relish and treasure those vantage points. So I would like to be able to find more volunteers to be part of PrAC. The way that we've also organized ourselves in the last couple of years is by taking our work items and kind of splitting them up to, in essence, subgroups that can focus on, on those work items. And I would like to have, frankly, more bodies. Laura and I have talked about working with our communications director and, and putting out kind of a campaign to draw in more people. I did notice that one person has recently raised their hand that I, just this past week, that possibly might be a member. So that's, I think, one of the challenges we have is having our volunteers and not keeping our volunteers engaged and involved. So that's part of it. And in making sure that the things that our volunteers feel that they need to have available to them to work the, the work items, we need to have that interaction with staff. And that's something that both Peter and Laura and the new, Mike, I can't remember what his specific title is these days, but he has a whole lot of park background, and we're working with him on trails. And so I think that's gonna, gonna be good. There's some things that we're eager to get moving on, but, but the, sometimes the pace of the board, it doesn't match the enthusiasm of our committee. And so, but I'm kind of used to that, 'cause I've been around for a long time. And I gotta help, help some of our newer volunteers in that.
Thank you, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I see Director Johnson's got his, raised his hand. Director Johnson, you have the floor.
I do, thanks. Thanks, Julie, for putting your head on the chopping block for this again. We appreciate your efforts. So just wanted to ask us a single question. How would you characterize the relationship between PrAC and the board? And by which I mean, historically, how would you describe the relations you mentioned a little bit, a little while ago, that folks get frustrated with the pace of the board? So I would need to, to, to find out in general, you know, how you would characterize the overall relationship between PrAC and the board? And I guess also building on that, what you think the, what you think PrAC's role should be in relation to the board? I'll go unmute.
Okay. PrAC is an advisory committee. While there are activities that we are doing at the behest of the board, for example, the Shadowwood Community engagement that we went out and did the survey, that was something the board asked for PrAC to step up and do, that had not been on our work item, but we stepped up and we did it. And we got, you know, kind of the answer that, that the, the community did wish to have and keep that pool. So, and I, I would say that, that over the years, one of the things, then the reason for the Recreation Facilities Working Group even being put in place while I was still on the board, was to kind of re-energize and rethink the role of PrAC as a partner with the board and being more engaged from the front end and not just at the back end. So I personally am, am pleased with where I'm seeing the relationship between the board and, and PrAC going. I'm hopeful that the board will be receptive to ideas that we may come back to the board with that might come out of our working on the work items that are before us or things that we've observed that we would like to see changed or, or addressed. There's been some ideas over the years that we have not seen the board take action on. Though I think this year you actually are. Though I think this year you actually are. What comes to mind is the ability to rent boats, paddleboards, or, you know, at Lake Audubon, for example, rather than just being at Lake Anne. And that was a suggestion that had been put forth many years. And I think this year, if I'm correct, it's happening. Maybe Peter Lust can comment on that. But I think that that's, you're doing a trial on that this year. So.
Okay, thank you. Director Johnson, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Director Dodd, please.
My husband is an avid swimmer and speaks a lot with the other swimmers there, and there are comments that they would like to share. But I know you would never get my husband to join a committee or possibly not even attend a committee meeting.
Well, we develop written comments or member comments monthly, you know. They don't have to always come in person and participate in member comments. They can certainly send their concerns in.
Okay, and so I've heard.
And we'll take them into consideration. We're happy to do that.
So I've heard suggestions that perhaps the late part of the swim season, when it is difficult to fill the lifeguard slots, that perhaps swimmers suggest that differential pay, higher pay, could be offered during those hard-to-fill-time periods. I've also heard suggestions that as wonderful as the Lake Thoreau Pool is, the men's room in particular could use some additional privacy barriers. And so, anyway, if your community is.
To give comments, Laurie, I would suggest that those are actually operations issues and staff issues, not the advisory committee.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Santa.
Hi, Julie. I just wanted to ask how Prac looks forward to do complimentary work to the Lake Equity Group. And in the long term, how you may see maybe incorporating Lake Equity Group as a subgroup in the future, since there is an expiration date on that group? Just looking to hear your thoughts on that.
You've touched on an item that I have a personal opinion on, and I will share that. As part of Prac, we did have a work item that we were looking at in terms of availability, accessibility for lakes and being able to get more activity in that. As we were doing that, was about the time that we froze Prac and created the Recreational Facilities Working Group. It was always an item that Prac had as, considered as one of their amenities. When the working group was being formed, I as Chair and as a volunteer did point out that I felt that it could have been done as a subgroup to Parks Recreation Advisory Committee, that that was something I felt was within our charter. Myself and Mickey Morvitz, who is also interviewing tonight, we have taken on for this year's work item to be that liaison point back to Lake Equity Working Group. One of the things, I'm not sure if you all know, that I had done when I took over the Chair was I felt that we needed to have a better collaboration with the other advisory committees. And I've attempted to have a person volunteer to take on that coordination role, you know, just keeping tabs of what the other committees doing, what, you know, maybe attends some of their meetings so that we can make sure we don't miss something, right? That might touch upon our area or something we might find that might touch upon theirs. So that goes back to me wanting more volunteers on the committee. Because I don't have someone, the person who was doing Environmental Advisory Committee, they have left our committee. I do have someone for fiscal. I don't have someone really for IT, but that seems to be more of a staff thing as opposed to a Prac. So anyways, that's, you know.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Does that help? Okay, any other questions, comments from other Board members? Great, thank you very much, and we'll discuss and obviously we'll.
Hello.
I'm sorry.
Jennifer.
I just want to clarify because in our packet, it says that Julie is applying for the Vice Chair position for the June 24, 25. And I just want to clarify because I heard her say Chair, and I remember reading it in the packet and thinking, oh, someone else, I guess, has stepped up to be Chair.
No, we have no Vice Chair. It's just me. So unless you don't want me as Chair, no, I'll have to go back.
Committee title to which candidate seeks appointment, Committee Member Reappointment for Three-Year Term and Chairman of Prac 2024-2025.
That's what I thought I put in my application.
Her last page.
Oh, you're saying on the cover page. On the application itself, it is correct.
Okay, so I just want to clarify. She's asking for Chair, and that's how we would need to make the motion.
So clarification is that she's applying for the Chair? Yeah, thank you. Okay, got that. Thank you. Thank you, Director Josh Jack. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
I believe the next one is Mickey Morvitz.
Mickey, you've been asked to unmute?
I can't hear.
There you go.
It said it wasn't allowing her to, but she's got it now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mickey, if you could just tell us just a bit about yourself and your service to Prac at this point and just why you're looking forward to another term.
Okay, all right, so I will follow Julie's. So first of all, I live at 2413 Bugle Lane in Reston. I have lived in Reston since 1984. And actually, originally in Deepwood, but then moved over to the RA side. I've been, let's see, as, you know, well, first of all, I raised three kids here in Reston, so I was very, very active in, you know, all the different things going on in the schools and various communities, you know, organizations around. But since that time, I just wanted to contribute more to RA. So I think, you know, was on the Pony Barn Working Group, and then was on the Rec Facilities Working Group as kind of predecessors to being on Prac. Julie, of course, recruited me on Prac. But, you know, I think that, I think Prac, the basic foundation of Prac is to support the Board and to have more consistency, some more history of, you know, why recommendations have been made, what we've learned in the past and so forth. And I think hopefully that consistency is a benefit to the Board.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Director Farrell?
Mickey, would you mind just talking a little bit about, so recently, within the last year plus, the Prac Committee has had the benefit of the Community Survey or Community Outreach Questionnaire that we put out a little while ago. And just wanted to kind of get your thoughts and your opinion on how that's kind of influenced Prac's decision-making and thought process as it's looked to put together its work plan in the past and how you think it might shape it in the future?
So I think a couple of big things came out of that survey. Prior to that survey, there was a lot of talk, debate, conversation, I think, within Prac, outside of Prac. You know, how much did we need? Fifteen pools? How much does RA want to continue to maintain fifteen pools? And staff fifteen pools? And how much is really needed and so forth? And I think that there was, I always say there are pros and cons of everything, right? But that survey clearly said, hey, we really like how Reston is set up, the idea of having those neighborhood pools and so forth. Now, that's an expensive decision, I know. Would have been expensive to change it too, okay? The other thing is, you know, and by the way, I'm a longtime real estate agent, and one of the things I sell about Reston is our path system. I mean, that is one thing that Reston has that no other community really has anything like us. So I was thrilled to see that that was one of the biggest assets that people, of course, value. And I'm in total agreement on that. So to make the pathways easier and that kind of thing, I think is in Reston's interest and Reston membership interest and everything. And I also think having more easier and more equitable lake access, I think, is also something to really work toward for Reston Association and for the membership. You know, those are two assets that we have and that people really value. And that was shown in the survey. So, you know, and those are the two things I'm more involved in on Prac. Now, to Julie's point, I think Prac absolutely needs more involvement, more volunteers coming in with different viewpoints would be really, really helpful to both Prac and the Board.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions from other Board members? I'm going around the room. I don't see anything. Thank you very much, Mickey, and obviously we'll discuss and let you know. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
If I mispronounce anything else, I'm going to put my glasses on, right? All right, next item on the agenda is Shadowwood Pool renaming. Carol.
Are you on? Hello, everybody. Well, I'm going to be very, very brief. You all saw the agenda report in your packets as well as the slides. I will pull them up here if you have any questions on them, but we don't really need to go through them all if it was pretty self-explanatory. So in a nutshell, the results of this campaign were pretty evenly split, fifty-two to forty-eight percent. And because there is not the overwhelming desire to rename the pool, again, about fifty-fifty, I shared some of the suggested names that came through in the online form. We are recommending as staff that we not change the name at this time. We did look back through the archives, and Director Farrell was correct when he said that a vote had been taken back in 2011. It was in February of 2011. And at that time, it was decided not to rename that pool. So with all of those factors, we thought that it was not a good time for this to happen. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I have one question for you, just looking at the package. Just general comment. Elections have been lost and won based on point zero zero one percent on the vote. Fifty, as I was looking at the numbers, fifty-two to forty-seven is not really even. Am I reading it wrong?
No, you're not reading it wrong. I mean, I think it was about.
Three hundred fifty-one respondents.
Yes, so about fifteen submissions differentiated between the two. Again, so not an overwhelming victory, so to speak. Again, and this feedback form was simply to gauge whether or not there was that extended interest. It was not meant as an election-type of survey, so.
Okay, thank you. Director Farrell.
Mr. President, I attended, I think you also did, the open house at Nature House, which we had five people show up, one of whom I know to be opposed to the change, and four of whom were interested in the change. And I have been asking this question since this issue came up, and I need to explain something. This issue started to be revisited when we had the listening session at Langston Hughes in the spring of '23, right? And it was represented to me at the time that this, one or two clusters had raised this issue, and the Board hadn't acted. And it was on that that I committed to finding a time for the Board to consider the question. That was not an accurate representation. What was accurate is that the Board acted in 2011. And when the Board acts in order to undo that act, such an act, it requires a two-thirds vote. And given the burden on us to come up with that kind of number, I asked two questions. The question, and they were the following, and to which I have yet to receive an answer. What has changed since 2011 to justify changing the name of this recreational area? Because it's not just the pool. It's also a tennis court and maybe some other property. Crickets. There has been absolutely nothing presented to justify changing the name of this pool. The next question I asked those who were in favor of it, and again, got zero answers, is how can we view this proposal as anything other than an attempt to disassociate this pool from the working-class people of color who live in Shadowwood? Because that would be totally inconsistent with the philosophy of Reston, the inclusory nature of Reston. And I got no answer that addressed that issue. So, Mr. President, I move that the Board take no further action with regard to the name change at Shadowwood Pool Recreation Area. I need a second.
Second. Is there discussion?
Yeah, my only thought on the no action is that renaming facilities in Reston could be something that the Board should have some form of guidance on. I'm not talking about Shadowwood specifically, but I do think there will be times that we, Lake Audubon is one of them, right? That we have in our history looked at as possible renaming opportunities. And so what staff has presented to us is that they are willing to do the research on what proposed guidelines could look like. So that if a Board, whether it be ours or a future Board, wanted to consider this type of thing, they have at least some precedent laid out for how they would go about this process and some thought behind it.
Mr. President, just one second. Let me acknowledge Director Johnson and Director Perry. I see you. Let me finish with Director Farrell, and I'll come to you.
As long, I didn't really, like, the no action.
My motion doesn't preclude that.
Okay.
I'm happy to speak to that at the time if that motion comes up. My motion is only aimed at Shadowwood to say, okay, enough.
That was the only clarification I need. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Johnson, Director Perry, I just didn't see who raised their hands first. Director Johnson, may I?
I'm happy to let.
Thank you. Director Perry, you go first. Yes, Director Perry.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I was unable to be at the Shadowwood Listening Session, and I regret that my calendar did not allow that. I did hear from some attendees, and it was unfortunate to hear that those Board members present made it very vocal that they were against the name change versus being neutral. And I was very sorry to hear that. I think that as Directors, we should have been neutral. I think Director Farrell's questions to those present were valid questions, and I'm sorry to hear he didn't get sufficient answers to those questions. The reality is, is the members have asked for us to make a stand, period, and a no. stance, unfortunately, is not what they've asked of us. And so I cannot support a let's do nothing when that's not what the members asked of us. And we're here on behalf of the members, whether we like it or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Johnson.
Um, I have a question and a quick comment. I'll do the comment first. With regards to Director Perry's point a moment ago, I would take a no further action as a no vote. That would be my interpretation of that, of the board taking that action. And I would, one, like to ask Director Farrell if he would agree. And secondly, I also wanted to ask Director Farrell, you said that it would require a two-thirds vote in order to overturn a previous board action. Was that specific to... I, I, you know, as I, as I say it out loud, I'm starting to answer my own question, but I'm still going to, going to ask it. That's, that's not specific to this. That's specific to any such question, correct? Anytime the board has taken action, it requires a two-thirds vote of the board to overturn that action. So two, two separate questions for Director Perry.
Sure. Where the board has taken an action that's recorded, adopting a resolution as an example, right? And we came up, you'll recall that we went through this when we did Resolution Five, the changes to Resolution Five. We needed a two-thirds vote because we were making a change to an existing resolution. So as I read Robert's rules, that once the board votes on something, that if a subsequent board or something wants to undo a decision already made, it requires a two-thirds vote of the board. And and to answer your question, I, I don't believe that the question, not only were the questions, did I not get any satisfactory answer, I got no answer at all to either of those two questions. And as the memorandum points out, about half of our pools are named after the residential community that abuts the pool. So naming this pool after Shadowwood is not anything extraordinary. And quite honestly, I, I wished that I had been made aware when I was asked to give the commitment to come forward, and I felt it was being authentic to let the members know that I already had an opinion on the matter. I think to try and pretend that I didn't would have been disingenuous. But the reality is, having made the decision in 2011, there needed to be something to cause us to go back and revisit that issue. There's nothing that prompts some, there was a vote, somebody lost, and now they want a recount. Where have we heard that before?
Thank you. I just a quick round here from my side. Mr. Champs, do you, with regards to the two-thirds as it relates to previous actions, can, do you have any opinion on that?
Motion to rescind or alter something previously adopted without notice requires a two-thirds vote. With notice requires a simple majority. And the reason we needed a two-thirds vote for five was because the bylaws require, always require a two-thirds vote to amend.
Yep. Right. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry. The bylaws require two-thirds vote to amend...
The bylaws, to amend a motion or a...
And specifically, that particular...
Documented as a...
Resolution related to rela...
No, it was, Resolution Five was related to the...
I'm sorry.
Board staff operations.
Right.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Director Santa, please.
I'd just like to say, since I was one of the three board members that attended, just to provide some more additional color, because it was Erwin, John, and I, there were six individuals, four from one cluster, one who was a new resident. And she probably had, I would say, the most fair assessment of the situation. I just want to provide it because it was genuinely authentic and honest. She herself thought that that pool belonged to Shadowwood. She also then, as, again, it was a small group discussion, so this was, really became like a dining room table conversation between everybody there. She then learned that the reason why some of the history of this, or one of the many factors as to why there's an effort to change the pool, was because of the associated socioeconomic status, possibly the crime. I have myself tried to look up the crime numbers on Fairfax County PD, haven't been able to track them down yet. But that stigma, when she learned about that, she's like, oh, well, that's not really fair. So she then said, she herself presented this viewpoint, which was, well, how about we, instead of change the name, put a true, genuine effort, maybe run a pilot, where we try to make all of the neighboring communities very inclusive? Her plan was, can we try that out and then see if there's a required name change? But she was, after she learned everything there, she was like my, my juror, she made it very clear to me that, hey, let's make it inclusive. Let's actually fight for that, and let's go from there. And and based off of that, in my experience and what I heard from board members and my own research of of the community, I agree with Farrell. We should take no action, and I think we should actually work towards inclusivity in making that effort amongst all the communities in both Spanish and English.
Thank you. So Director Farrell, just, could you... Director Johnson, this is, yeah, the last round, please. You're on mute.
Thank you. Question for Secretary Santa. You said inclusive. Just wanted to get some additional context for what that meant.
Please.
Well, I, I think we all know how neighborhoods work. You know, if you live on the other end of a single family and the townhouses are here and the condos are here, sometimes those communities don't interact. And I think the beauty of that facility is that it does attract lots of different crowds. So let's make sure there's a genuine effort. It's not for me to implement, but if I had to think right here on the spot in the spirit of brainstorming, it's why don't we work with the cluster presidents of each of the neighboring communities and make sure we create that dialogue so that the confusion goes away, but we're also neighborly with each other?
Thank you.
So when we say, I'm sorry, for, so additional clarity. So when we say inclusive, we're talking about, like, more community-building activities in there?
That would be correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Farrell, would you like to repeat the motion that you just made, just for clarity?
Thank you, Mr. President. My motion is only the following, that the board take no further action on the renaming of the Shadowwood Recreational Area. That doesn't preclude your activity or your idea, doesn't preclude the conversation that missed. It just says, okay, no, we're not going to change the name of the Shadowwood Recreation Area.
Thank you. And I understand Director Flashman did a second on that. At this point, I think we...
A no is not no action, just FYI. No action is no action, a no is a no.
Director Dodd, please.
Just one comment that I saw, that there was a comment in the chat from Julie Bitzer, and I'm interested because only part of it showed on our screen. Is there, can we turn on her mic and hear a comment from...
Brittany, can you read the chat?
I have difficulty seeing it.
There. I know.
So do you mind if I read it aloud? The primary reason that Prac voted to change the name from Shadowwood was that people did actually feel that the pool was only for that development. Perhaps the signage for Shadowwood Pool could be modified so that it explicitly speaks to a pool for and by the Reston Association.
Okay. Thank you. So that's just a member comment. It's not a board coming from a board member. But I think at this point, we are ready to vote. Director Flashman.
I'd like to answer that issue that was just raised.
If you can be brief, please. Thank you. Yes?
And the fact of the matter is that the sign outside says it is the Reston Association Pool.
That's right. Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Signage.
Question asked, question asked.
Thank you very much. All right. We have a motion on the table, seconded by Director Flashman. We have had enough discussion on this. All those in favor of Director Farrell's motion say aye.
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 I, I see Director Johnson, Director Jess Jack, Director Dodd, Director Flashman, Director Farrell, Director Santa, Vice President Crywach, how do you, nay? Okay, so we have one, two, three, four. Yes, I'll, I'll count the yeses first. Director Perry, let's see.
Nay.
Nay, okay. So we've got two nays and six, seven yays, the motion passes. Thank you.
I would like to bring up staff's proposed motion still, because I do think it's relevant, and I don't think this is going to be the only situation that the board or future boards find themselves in when it comes to renaming facilities. So I, I moved to direct staff to draft a resolution regarding renaming amenities in Reston due for the Board of Directors' review and approval no later than September 12th, Board of Directors' working session. And I'm flexible on that date. If if people want to push it back further, obviously, we don't have anything pressing at the moment with Shadowwood, so.
I, I might just offer an opinion on that, because there, we, we wrote that anticipating if you all wanted to change the Shadowwood name, that that would be, become a very pressing decision point. I might suggest at end of the year, we don't know how the budget start, if that works for everybody.
That's completely fine. Consider my motion amended to end of calendar year.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Is there discussion? Director Farrell?
Whenever some of us on this board come up with an initiative that would involve staff time and resources, I frequently hear that staff time and resources are limited, and therefore, that initiative needs to be deferred until, I don't know, 2055 or something like that. I see this is, I only see a one-off here. The only other name change that I've heard of is the one I'm interested in, which is Lake Audubon. If we were in, in, deluged with four or five other ones, that's fine, let's develop us. But we don't need to bureaucratize a one-off. And at this point, it's a one-off. I don't see any other proposal coming forward to change the name of a facility. And given the frequent comment that there isn't enough staff time or enough staff resources to staff a committee that I happen to sit on, or to do this, or to do that, I just think we've got more important things for the staff to do. So I, I won't be voting in favor of the motion, not because I don't think it's a good idea, I just don't think it's a priority. I think this can wait and, and doesn't, we don't need to take, allocate staff time to do something that is only going to be a one-off.
Okay. Director Johnson, you have your hand up.
Mac has, has stated that staff can do this with an extended timeframe, and I, I for one, am willing to let the CEO of the organization give us a, a fair estimation of what they can and can't do.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion? Director Jess Jack, yes, Director Jess Jack.
I don't think that we should develop a resolution for this. I don't think, first of all, I don't want to box the future board into a resolution on what this should look like, because I think that each, that, that each board should be able to massage the, the way that we go about renaming. I do think that it is worth requesting staff to do, like, a standard operating process that if a future board has, has some interest in doing a renaming, that there is at least, you know, the first few steps are kind of established for how the board goes about it, or that we have something in the background that help leads the board through it. But I, I don't think that this, this rises to the level of a resolution at all.
You are, you are correct. And I, as the person who made the motion, I also agree with you that this does not rise to the level of resolution. I was thinking, and the intent of my motion was more guidelines for this board or future boards, so I, you know, if whoever seconded the motion would be open to amend.
I'd ask for unanimous consent to change the word resolution to guidelines. Without objection, if we can make that amendment.
Any objections? Okay.
Thank you.
Unanimous consent, okay.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jen, yeah. So Director Johnson, you seconded that motion, and we've had enough discussion on that. Are we ready to vote? Let's see, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
What do we have here? We have two, yep, the motion fails, then Carrie. Thank you.
Can you, for the record, at least, votes, could you please, the, the hands raised in person are not able to be seen. Could you please provide who voted?
Let me, let me...
We also need to record nays and abstains. There's, there's a difference between those votes. We need it for the minutes. So we have to call all three every time we vote.
Yeah. Those in favor were Vice President Crywach, myself, and Director Johnson, three yays.
And Director Perry.
I'm sorry. And Director Perry, yes, thank you, four. Those against? I have Director Dodd, Director Flashman, Director Farrell, and Director Jess Jack, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Abstain, and Director Santa abstained. So we've got two abstains.
Four, three, two.
We have four, three, two.
Four, three, two.
Four, three, two, that...
Then Carrie, need five. Majority.
Does not carry, majority.
Still fails.
The motion fails. Okay.
I think you're going to move on to the next item, but I would just want to have an administrative note, I think might be appropriate to note here. One of the things that's come up in the Shadowwood Recreation Area is issues relating to getting members registered and signed up for various things, particularly given work schedules and when we're open down here at HQ. We've made the administrative decision to take member services to Shadowwood both Saturday and Sunday to try to capitalize on being there for the grand opening party. So we put the word out to a number of the management companies, I mean, frankly, everyone would get a hold of, but just so the boards are aware, we're trying to make that effort this weekend particularly.
Thank you.
Excellent.
You have the next item on the agenda.
Mr. President, before we leave that issue...
Yes.
Mr. Flashman and I went through the entire complex at Shadowwood.
Yep.
And the message was, come on out on the fifteenth thing, get your pool passed.
Yes.
So that, that message has been delivered in person to all 450 units.
Thank you for doing that, Director Flashman, and thank you for doing the door hangers as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mac, you have the next item.
Ed's going to guide you through the budget.
Good, thank you. Ed, it's all yours.
Okay, good evening. So next, we'll be talking about the member suggestions and the next steps on that. There was a, you know, memo included with the package, but I'll give you a few points on that. Tonight's meeting is when the boards will determine which suggestions to move forward to the committees, so the committees can evaluate them and get back to you their recommendations as far as which ones they'd recommend, you know, move forward the pricing. And you all would make the decision in the July 11th meeting which ones we should move forward the pricing. Another date is July 1st. That's the deadline for all member suggestions to be submitted, as well as board and committee. So we're asking that all suggestions be in by July 1st. But the ones that were included in the package, that were the ones that had been received in time for the board package. But they are continuing to come in, so we'll have more for the July 11th meeting. And then September 11th, just a reminder, that's when the first draft of the budget would be published, but we'd be using your guidance on July 11th as far as which ones to move forward the pricing for that. And we'll definitely provide some help for that meeting on July 11th, try and make it, you know, an efficient process to help you determine which ones you want to move forward on. But in the package, and I also emailed it earlier today in the Excel spreadsheet, there were sixty-seven member suggestions, and we tried to sort them by kind of categories like camps, aquatics, tennis, et cetera, and then, you know, list the who, which member gave them to you and, or gave them to us, what the suggestion was, and our recommendation for your consideration of which committee, or in a few cases, committees that they should go to. So, you know, aquatics and tennis ones would go to Prac, there were some environmental ones, et cetera. And we did recommend none on a number of them, not because they weren't good ideas. I mean, we got a lot of good suggestions, but some of them weren't really budget-related. We didn't feel they were... but some of them weren't really budget-related. We didn't feel there were more operational issues or things that we were already doing. So some of them were recommended as not going to any committee. But in all cases, in the far-right column, they were kind of our, you know, quick comments as far as what was our rationale for our recommendation to you. You know, 67 comments so far and more coming in, so we have more than double than we got last year. So a lot of good comments coming in. And, you know, they haven't been unreasonable. I mean, you know, most of them have been very useful. I mean, the only kind of wild one was one person wanted to build a bowling alley. But even that member kind of said, I know you're probably not going to build a bowling alley, but they suggested doing a bowling event. So we kind of put it more in the context of a bowling event. But I think the communications team did a really nice job, you know, publicizing that we were taking the member requests. If you recall, we extended the deadline to July 1st, which, you know, does create the one challenge that some of the committees aren't going to be able to review some of those. But we'll be able to get a lot of good submissions in and, you know, look at those again on July 11th. But for tonight, you know, kind of what we're looking for is not to go through all 67 one by one, but hopefully you've had a chance to review them and kind of our recommendations of which ones to submit to which committees. And, you know, we'd be looking for a motion to either accept as is or discuss and, you know, make whatever changes you'd like to do on that.
Thank you.
Quick summary, but happy to take any questions.
Okay, we have any comments, questions?
You don't have any.
Director.
Does anybody else?
Yeah, Director Farrell, I don't see any hands.
Mr. President, I actually read all of these, but it was not easy. And it's not easy because what was in the package had a one-point font.
That was on purpose, by the way.
Well, that worries me. I hope that's not true.
That's an eye test.
And so as a result, I couldn't start looking at these over the weekend. I couldn't get these until, what, Monday or Tuesday? And I think Director Jashak had the same issue. I don't know if she got it. And I don't know if anybody else took out their magnifying glass and went over it like it was a fingerprint.
Apologize for that. Our thought was that you would be able to, you know, expand them electronically, but happy to provide them in another way if that's helpful.
Which many of us still were able to do.
Yeah, I was able to expand it, yeah.
So that's a, B.
Paper is still good.
With 67, with 67 different suggestions and a lot of empty columns, it strikes me that in the going forward, we need to have numbers on the items so that it's easier for, in a meeting like this, for us to say to our fellow board members, well, with regard to item number 23, without having the board members shuffling around and page numbers. And that's not the first time this has come up. We had that with the Secretary's Quarterly Update, getting page numbers so that people could, the board members could follow along with the conversation. Mr. President, in 67 of these, having reviewed all 67, once I had the material to do it, I have at least 25 that I would either want to make, that I'd want to make changes on or ask for further clarification. I don't want to take up the board's time tonight.
Thank you.
To make, to go through these one at a time. I know that we'd like to get these out to the board members, I mean strike that to our advisory committees. But I'm wondering if we can postpone this matter until our next meeting so that there's an opportunity for that further information or consultation to be undertaken to try and get these to the right committee and to try and narrow down. I mean, PrAC, I think, has got 30 recommendations sending to them, maybe more. And I'm not sure that they're going to be able to, having been a member of PrAC for three years, I'm not sure it's fair to say to them, well, come and evaluate 30 ideas between now and whatever our deadline is. So, you know, part of the question is, is, you know, with volunteer time, do we need to act as a filter on what we send off to our advisory committees? And in some cases, the recommendation is to send it to fiscal committee when it should be going to another committee as an example. And so I'm, I don't know how to go forward here, Mr. President, but I'm just not comfortable just adopting these recommendations.
Ed, any feedback on Director Farrell's comments?
I understand it's challenging for sure and can certainly add the item numbers to it and send that out, you know, tonight even. But as far as delaying it, I mean, the challenge with that is, you know, we're looking for a decision in the July 11th meeting as far as which ones you'd like us to move forward with pricing. So to have the committees have a chance to review those, you kind of need to get them to committees pretty soon. Like the fiscal committee meeting I know will be next Wednesday, or no, Thursday, because the 19th is Wednesday. But, you know, I'm sure the other committees are going to be meeting soon, so we just need to get it to them, you know, relatively quickly so you can get the feedback before the July 11th meeting.
Okay.
So the way I, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the way I read it was there's 34 member comments that have been selected for committees, three of which are multiple committees. So there's 31 individual comments that will, or excuse me, 34 individual comments, 31 would be, if you subtract the three, that'll go to multiple places. I don't think that's completely unreasonable. I think it's good participation. And if we are going to limit that participation of our membership early in this, like earlier than necessary in this process without even sending it to committee, I just think it goes against the spirit of the initiative. If our committees can't do it and they come back to us and tell us we didn't get through all of them, then the board will have to take it upon itself anyway to evaluate and look at them. So like, why delay the process to get it to committee? If they're not going to be able to do the job, they're not going to be able to do the job, then it falls on us anyway to do the job.
I have a question here. Director Farrell, you, I believe you said you have maybe about 20 some, 20-plus comments on, 20 questions, suggestions?
There are 25, Mr. President. And in many cases, it's why is it going to this committee and not that committee?
Right.
And and so that's the, or why is this even being considered? Because of other constraints.
Okay.
And I think, I think before we burden committees with considering something that there's no chance of happening in this budget year, like new facilities or lighting, which, you know, is, we're not going to be able to get to it because we've got zoning issues that we have to work through. So why would we ask some committee to consider something that there's no chance of happening during the next budget cycle?
Just a quick comment, Director Perry and Director Johnson, I see your hand raised. Let me just finish here with my comment. So what if we think about the ones that you at least don't have any comments or at least the board doesn't have any comments, those can go forward.
Six comments.
And then the other ones, we can find some time to do something offline and get together to work this collaboratively and then provide common feedback to, to the staff as a way of trying to respect their deadline or timeline and something to that effect.
So I move to forward member suggestions to committees as indicated by staff and will follow up with the with the initiative to follow up as a president and VP with Director Farrell to then re-forward any comments that need to go to another committee as well. So that way, yes, a original comment might get to a committee that Director Farrell doesn't believe it it needs to be at, but they can evaluate it on its own merits based off staff suggestion. And then if it needs to go somewhere else, it can go somewhere else as well, and that committee can look at it.
Second.
And I'll repeat the motion. Motion is to forward member suggestions to committees as indicated by staff with any additional comments forwarded to applicable committees as directed by Director Farrell.
So we have Director Perry who seconded the motion. We can discuss this. Director, Director Johnson, you've had your hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Since, you know, Director Farrell raises a good point, as far as I'm concerned, that we just got a readable version of this document. And it's an Excel spreadsheet, which we are all capable of, you know, reading, editing, et cetera. Could we just do this offline? And each of us send our comments back to Ed by, you know, it's, today's Thursday, by COB tomorrow in order to get either further response or action. I say that with all due respect to Vice President Crywacz's motion, but I do think that we need some additional time collectively to review and make the necessary comments, given the new format.
Director Crywacz, I know, Director Perry, I'll come, I'll come to you in just one second.
It's fine, go to Director.
Director Perry, go ahead.
First and foremost, I would not be against Director Johnson's request that everyone put in your two cents in the next 12 hours. We have extremely competent, sorry, I guess a little more than 12 hours, but still. We have extremely competent staff. We have extremely competent committee volunteer members. And to constantly second-guess both of those on a regular basis, you know, our committee members are not immune to what is going on in Reston. They can surely look at a few things and go, no, this one can't move forward. Maybe you guys should look at this one. Ultimately, all they're doing is advising, hey, look at it or not. That's not unreasonable. And as Director Crywacz suggested, if they say we don't have enough time in one month, great, tell us, no big deal. But to constantly second-guess staff and constantly make note that, oh, our committees can't possibly do that work is undermining their competence. And honestly, it gets old.
Thank you. Let's see, Director Jashak, you have your hand raised. Go ahead, please.
One is, I would love to request a print version of this for our July meeting on 11 by 17 paper, because it's the only way to be able to print and read it. Number two is there are actually things on this list that have nothing to do with RA. And for some reason, we have seen that in the past on the suggestions where staff have denoted, this is not an RA item, like we don't own it, we don't, it has nothing to do with us. And I'm not seeing that on this list. So I've denoted a few that I think need to be removed because they have nothing to do with, with RA. And I'd like to request staff to follow up with the members to let, you know, most of the time it's education, that they, they just need to understand that those are not RA facilities. But if they are county-related facilities, then I would request that our CEO and president take those suggestions and carry them forward to to our board of supervisors for their thought and consideration. And number three, the, we just did a survey. And our survey came back overwhelmingly and said, no, no, members do not want new facilities. So I actually feel bad punting a bunch of new facility requests that are great, you know, great ideas from members. But I'd love to hear the rest of the board. Is that where your head is at? Because my head is that our members are not wanting new facilities and that we would at least for a year or two, take the survey data and, and keep to that because there are a lot of new facilities here. There is, you know, new facilities related to pickleball. That is something that we already have staff exploring. And so that one, that one I understand because it's a carryover from previous, from previous to the survey. But outside of maybe the location for pickleball, I, my vote would be to remove all of the new facility requests. Staff can certainly keep them for, you know, future, future ideas. But I don't want to burden ourselves or our committees with, with those requests. And I would be happy to write back some of the ones that are things that I am interested in. I really did like, a few years ago, when we had a spreadsheet that we all could jointly contribute to, where we actually did a ranking. Each of us, you know, had a column and we did a ranking. We said, we're most interested or least interested in this because it allowed us to kind of do an average of how the board felt about it. And I believe that will actually make our July meeting easier because we'll be able to address the things that kind of rise to the top for most board members. So that would be my vote on, on feedback via, you know, the Travis method, but more in a format that, that we each can contribute to. Thank you.
Director Crywacz.
If there are facilities that do not belong to us, or do not in general belong on this, and they are part of the 34 staff-recommended member comments, then we should obviously remove them. That would be in everyone's best effort. But if they are already removed by staff, which they have removed about 50% of these comments due to, no, I'm not talking about zoning, I'm not talking about anything other than truly, we do not own the facility, therefore it has no business being on our agenda. I fully understand and appreciate that. What I'm trying to do, the spirit of my motion, is to try to take every member comment seriously. There is obviously a community survey out there that shows the breadth and the will of the community at large. No question about that. But members are still allowed to disagree with that. They're still allowed to have their preferences and they're still allowed to write a comment towards that. And it's our job to parse it down through the budgetary process. The calendar that we have adopted says that we should provide all common sense and applicable things to the committees. The committees should be that first layer of parsing through. And then we come in on July 11th and we do the business that we need to do to make sure we're only focused on the most applicable things to this year's budget. That's the spirit of the motion. It's, I appreciate everyone's willingness to jump in now and try to do the parsing and cut out committees or make their work and life even easier. But we adopted a schedule for this budget. I'm trying to abide by it. We have an opportunity to have our say. It's just not today or in 12 hours.
Any other comments? Director Perry, you have your hand up. Please go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I actually, I agree completely with Director Jashak. I loved a couple, I think it was two years ago when we had the, you know, we got to go through and rank kind of where we thought things were of a priority and then it kind of bubbled from there. I do think we've kind of missed our timeline for that opportunity. And I looked at the exact same survey you all looked at. Clearly, we all heard very different information because what I heard on that survey was that members wanted us to focus on maintenance and, and updating. But it wasn't that new facilities were an absolute stay away with a 10-foot pole. It was, please focus on these things, not completely stay away from anything else. And so I agree that to immediately tell people, we're not even going to listen to you because the survey, according to person XY, says that that's not what you all want, that's disrespecting our members. And again, as I've stated many, many times over a number of years, we are here for the members. We are here as their spokespeople. And to constantly shut them down and tell them, ah, we don't really want to hear what you have to say, is, is really unfortunate. And it happens more often than I really would like to see. And it's part of why we've gotten a bad reputation as a board as a whole. Because my goodness, nope, that's, the survey said this. Well, we happened Well, we happen to know that of our 60-some thousand members, there were not 60,000 opinions on that survey. So I agree with Director Grywacz. I agree in future, Director Justk, that I would love to go back to that format where we could at least give our opinions of what should be priorities that staff could review, not that it in any way takes away from the membership's voice. I really, we have a schedule, this is what we were supposed to do, we need to abide by it, because it's what we told the membership we were going to do. And for those of you who are dead set on constant transparency, let's be transparent and provide the members with what we told them we would do. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santa.
Travis was before me. Johnson.
Director Johnson, let me, yes, would you allow me get Director Santa first? Because she hasn't spoken yet.
I'm fine with that.
I did my homework, can't speak for anybody else, but is the question really at hand that we have not had enough time as a team to really feel comfortable with what staff has put together? Or is it that we just completely disagree, and we need more time to really finesse how we disagree with each other? Like, I don't know what we're arguing about.
So let me, let me jump in there and kind of try to bring a little focus on the discussion here. What I'm hearing is, we're getting a mix of things, but really, the things that stand out in my head are, we need more time to review the entire package, because for whatever reason, technical couldn't expand it and so on, it was too small, and we need more time to go through them. Number two, there was a suggestion made that maybe we should provide some comments within the next couple of days or something to the staff with regards to having more time to review these things. But I think what we're looking at here is, we're just asking to get more time to find better input? We're going all over the place, and I think that the intent of Director Grywacz's motion is, and the comment that I made was, on the ones that, and nobody has any concerns about, let the staff just move, committees move forward, start processing those, but on the ones that we all have some comments, at least get some time to review those and then provide some comments back.
I want all of them sent that staff have recommended. So this is the motion. Send them all that staff have recommended, and if there are things that need to go to another committee, so duplicate, if we need to send it to another committee as well, we will do so. And I can sit down and work with anybody that has suggestions on where it would go. But that's the motion. Folks can vote it up or down, however they please.
Okay, let me finish with Director Johnson. You have the floor.
Sure, thank you. So firstly, my concern with the motion is that if, because it's going to require further consideration, if it goes to committee today, and then it is decided tomorrow in 20 hours, not 12, that it will, doesn't need to go to that committee, then we're going to withdraw it from that committee and say, sorry, guys, you didn't need to get that.
We are not withdrawing anything, it'll just be a duplicate comment that's sent out to the whatever committee needs to go.
Wait, then I'm confused, if the, if the board's action tonight is mandated to say, we're going to push these off the committee, we're going to give these to the committee, and we take that action tonight, as per your motion, then if the board also takes further action to move into tomorrow, if we do, with further comment, then we're withdrawing. So my question is, your motion precludes Director Farrell's suggestion that we just have an additional few hours, or however much time, to look at the document. You're saying, just push it on, and then with the next scheduled meeting, we will then take further action and use the comments that are made to make our next decision in our next scheduled meeting.
That is not my understanding of the motion at all.
That, if you don't mind, Director Perry, I would really like to get Director Grywacz's interpretation of his motion.
All right, I will try this.
Director Grywacz, please, one more time.
I am following staff's motion that they have given us, to a T. That's it. The only add-on that I had was to try to provide a little bit of relief to Director Farrell's comments about the, he did not believe that the right committee was selected for some of the member comments. I'm okay with it going to multiple committees, because we already have precedent on three of these comments. They're going to multiple committees, per staff's recommendation. So if Director Farrell would like to send them to additional committees, then we will just receive two recommendations, one from the original, and one from wherever Director Farrell would like to send it. That's the only add-on. So there is, this isn't, everything that has been recommended by staff would just go. And then if we...
I'm sorry, I think you're missing a step in what I asked. So I understand that you're saying that it should go to committee. However, with your, with what you've suggested, if we allow Director Farrell's to make additional comment and for it to change committee, that would also mean that it would change the committee that it went to, meaning that it could be taken from one and moved to another.
It's not taken off anyone's plate. I cannot, once it's sent, it's theirs, they're going to make a comment on it. Staff decided that they were the most appropriate at the time. Whether staff is right or wrong is irrelevant. That committee can look at it, they can evaluate it based on their committee, provide a recommendation to the board, and we can send it to another committee to do the same thing.
It's in addition to, not instead of.
Yes, thank you.
Agreed.
Fair enough.
Okay.
This is getting too heated.
Yep, I think, I think we've had enough discussion on this.
How do we do that? How does the board do that?
How does the board do what?
Change the committee to which this is being sent, or add a committee to which it's being sent. How does the board do that?
Director Santa.
How would the board do it in a closed session?
We would amend this chart.
When?
We could do it tonight. I don't think that's wise.
I would not favor that, because we will be here up until midnight. Yes, we're going to go through them.
I have 25 amendments.
So you have the opportunity on the 11th to do whatever you want with these member comments?
No, sir, because we're burdening our committees. Look, just give an example.
The committees can do what they want with it.
If I may, bring back glass recycling. RA has never done glass recycling. I don't want to ask the environmental committee to spin their wheels on something that has been a county function.
So they will come back and say...
So EAC will say no.
Hold on to that. But why are we, that recycling, glass recycling, is a county function. Why are we asking the EAC to look at that? And that's not the only one like that. There are multiple other ones like that, where it's something that belongs to the county, or something that's being suggested it goes to physical, but it actually ought to go to IT or prep. And I'm saying, okay, fine, if we do that, then when does the board give a instruction that it goes someplace else? Either in substitution for, or in alternative to what has been proposed here?
Okay, point of order here. I want everybody to address their comments to the chair, please, to the president. We're getting out of hand here, we're just getting cross communication between members here, board members.
Mr. President, I apologize, I wasn't addressing...
That's a general comment for everybody here, thank you. We need to get back to the conversation, and we're just veering off right now. Director Santa, did you have something to say?
I'd just like to vote at this point.
Yes, thank you. So we have a motion on the table by Director Grywacz. Was there a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
Yes, Director Perry, seconded that. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
We have Director Perry, Director Grywacz, Director Dot, Director Santa, Director myself. It's one, two, three, four, five in favor. Those against? Director Farrell, Director Flashman, Director Justk, and Director Johnson, motion passes, five, four. Thank you.
President, just one administrative note, because there were some questions about ways that it might make it easier to make some final decisions about what to price out and what may have been done in years past. We are planning on suggesting something like what you did before, so just to answer, remember Justk, that we know there's going to be an unwieldy list regardless of what the committee recommendations are. We're going to try to help you with that in terms of how you all may be able to tier them, or do something that makes it easier than making what might be 50 or 60 by July 11. So just more to come on that. We understand the concern from the board to actually get down to a list to have me try to look at for the...
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Director Johnson.
No, I'm not...
Yes, I'm sorry, Director Justk, go ahead.
I'd like to motion to remove items seven, line item seven, line item 11, line item 13.
Which...
I'm not done yet. Line item 43.
Can you wait until we make some meaning out of the numbers you're throwing out?
Director Justk, can you clarify what you're referring to?
The pages are not numbered.
Yes, so it's the line items on the Excel spreadsheet.
They're not numbered, Director Justk.
I know, but on the Excel spreadsheet, there are line numbers.
There are rows, yes.
Yes.
I know what you're saying. Okay. Can you repeat that again?
I think the problem is if the document got sorted, that's, they're no longer the line items. So if you just sort, which I did when I got the Excel spreadsheet, I sorted the list based on cost. So the numbers on the left are no longer the numbers that you're calling, which calls, which is part of the problem with the document.
If you open the file again from the original place, then you see Jennifer's line items to match up with yours.
I'm sorry, say that again?
If you open the original attachment, then you'll be seeing the same view as Jennifer.
I get that, I appreciate, I appreciate that, thank you. I get that, but what I'm saying is, everyone who's in the room may not have gotten that, so I was just making an explanation for why there may be some...
It doesn't. It doesn't.
Hey, I'd like to state my motion, and then I'm happy to go over and do a summary of each item I'm speaking about, but I don't want that part of the motion, because then it will be a 20-page motion. Is that okay with everyone?
No.
Director Farrell? Yes?
I completely am in sympathy with Director Justk's motion, or proposed motion. And in fact, I would have done it myself, had I had numbers on the page, but I didn't, so I wasn't going to burden people. But we've already acted on the direction, and it would have been appropriate to make that motion prior to the vote being taken on the main motion. So reluctantly, I have to point out that this motion is no longer germane, because we've already voted on Director Grywacz's motion. And, yeah, the horse is out of the barn.
That's fine. I would just like to point out that we are sending things to committees that have nothing to do with Reston Association. I made that comment earlier, it was ignored by the board, and that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Santa, please, we're going to finish with this.
Question for staff. You have heard the feedback, everyone's in agreement with what has been said, that those that have nothing to do with RA should not be included. Is it the staff's intent after this meeting to send this file as is, or are you going to remove the things that should not be part of committee? I understand that this was an exercise of you doing due diligence and noting, like, not part of county, part of RA stuff, but you also missed stuff. So my question is, to address Jennifer's point, will this document be amended before it goes to committee?
And I appreciate that, Director Santa, but they can't. We just voted, they can't. But I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tony, yes, you have the floor.
Director Justk and Director Farrell, correct. What you voted on was to send this document.
That's right.
So staff is not able to edit it in any way, shape, or form.
And that's the problem.
Now...
Are you the only...
I could point out an alternative.
Please do.
The prevailing side could do a motion to reconsider the previous motion, to undo it essentially.
Right.
You would need...
It's majority.
It's simple majority to do it. You could then take up Director Justk's motion to remove certain items, that could be done, but it would need to be made by someone who was on the winning side.
Yes, that's, yes. Mr. President, I believe the proper procedure would be, someone who's on the prevailing side move to reconsider. They would need a second.
Correct.
That could come from anybody. And then, once we agree to reconsider, Director Justk's motion to amend could be made by Director Justk, or Director Flashman, or Director Perry. So you wouldn't need the motions to amend to be from the prevailing side. It would be possible for someone who is on the losing side to move to amend.
Correct. You're basically rewinding it to before the vote. But to trigger it, it has to be made by somebody who is on the winning side.
Which is why, Mr. President, why we record who votes how, so that they, we know if someone can properly make the motion to reconsider.
I motion to reconsider.
And I second the motion.
Fantastic. Are we in discussion now?
We're in discussion now.
So apparently, Director Justk, and, excuse me, I will, apparently, there are only two members of the entire body and the subsequent committees that can evaluate things that don't belong to Reston. And my point is, is we have spent so much time tonight not doing what we said we would do in the schedule that we already adopted. This has a time and a place, it isn't tonight. And we have smart, competent people who can do this in five seconds. They will make us look silly as they look at it, say, we can't do that, and they move on to the next one. It will take our committees two minutes to do what we have failed to do over the past 45 minutes. If it doesn't belong to us, they won't do it. And if they do, if it gets through the first layer of defense...
It's meaningless.
It's meaningless anyhow, because we will eliminate it.
So they won't know.
It doesn't, you're not the, there are not just two people in Reston that know what belonged to Reston, and the volunteers that we have are some of the most tapped-in people in our entire community. Let them do their job, and if they fail, and something gets through, then we will do the job that we are set out to do on the 11th. We've spent so much time doing absolutely nothing, and we will probably end up in the same place, or we will eliminate three comments or four comments and send it right back. Good Lord.
I made the motion to reconsider because I recognize that some of us know everything about Reston Association, and some of us know everything about the county, but not all of us. So if those folks that feel very strongly, this is your opportunity, since I made the motion, to just say, those items provide a criteria of what it is, so we're not here all night, I don't need to go line item by line item, but if you'd like to do that, let's do it, but there seems to be, like, we're hearing the debate split on the issue, and so I'm trying to provide the opportunity for those other members to come up and speak out to make this just a fair process as possible.
The motion was seconded, to reconsider. Director Johnson.
I just want to point out that there is a compromise on the table. We could take 20 hours, review this spreadsheet, give it back to staff, let staff then send... Let staff then send our comments out to committee, and we're done. Like the two of these things. And please, Director Grywicz, I understand that you're frustrated by the amount of time, and you're on mute.
I was clarifying to make sure, sorry, that your suggestion requires unanimous consent offline. And that would be very difficult for us to achieve, given the conversation that we're seeing tonight. So that's why we're not taking the compromise right now under consideration.
Mr. President, if I could speak to the point of order. Director Grywicz is correct that we don't act individually. We act as a body. And so if we were to go through and say, take off item, and Director Justjak has a list of them, right? You and I have experienced over the last two years that unless there's a majority vote of this board, even if there's a verbal consensus, without that majority vote, it ain't happening. That's frustrating because it seems to me that an oral consensus ought to be recognized and acted on. We shouldn't have to vote on everything, but we have found that we have to. And that's regrettable. And it's recognizing that that has been the process we've been taught to follow if we want to get the staff to do anything. There isn't an alternative. I wish there was. But that's where we find ourselves. And so I understand Director Justjak's, and I understand the frustration that this presents. But absent putting this off till the next meeting, I don't see an alternative. But somebody else has an alternative, I'm happy to listen. But to Director Johnson's suggestion, Director Grywicz is exactly right. I can make a suggestion on the 25 different items I see that are wrong one way or the other, or going to the wrong committee one way or the other. And I might as well be spitting in the wind if I don't have four other votes. That's what we've gotten to. And it's sad that we've gotten to that point, but that's where we are. And so I don't know, other than Director Justjak's motion, how to go forward here. It's clear that there are things here that are not RA's responsibility. It's clear that there are things here that are being sent to one committee, but ought to be going to another committee. So, and I appreciate the frustration, but if we, if if we were getting good input, it's Geigl, right? Garbage in, garbage out. If we were getting good input so that it was going to the right committee, then we wouldn't have motions such as the one that Director Justjak wants to make, or the ones that I would make if I was less respectful of the time of my fellow board members. I don't know what the solution is.
Director Dodd, do you have a comment?
I do. I feel the comment that we've just heard reflects a disrespect for the work that the staff has done. And I certainly have areas in which I would have filled out this chart differently than the staff did when they provided it to us. But that doesn't mean that my answer is clearly right and that the staff is clearly wrong. It does not. And I understand. And so I respect, I want to proceed, taking input from the staff for the purpose of deciding what committees go forward with this. But the ultimate vote is going to be made by the board, and I don't think we need to go through these one at a time tonight. I don't, I think the process, as Director Grywicz has suggested, will lead to the ones that need to be weeded out being weeded out. And it doesn't have to happen by a meeting that goes past midnight tonight.
So just one comment, I'm going to close the discussion. I agree with you, Director Dodd. I think we need to be respectful of the staff's work. And we cannot constantly just tell them, you didn't do it right. It should be this way because I know better than you do. I don't think that's right. I think we have our voice and we have our vote when the time comes to vote on these items, whether we like them or not. And that's the majority, you know, the board has to vote, and it's just one person. So I am, at this point, in favor of moving forward with the original motion that Director Grywicz put forward, and just stick with it. We have plenty of opportunities coming up. We've got another few meetings in the works. The roadmap for the budget process that was presented, we have, this board, in my opinion, has the opportunity at many different times in the next few months to accept, deny, reject, edit, modify, based on the collective vote that we will come up with. So tonight, we're just basically chasing our tail here, trying to prove that we have read this document, and I read those 67, and you guys didn't do that. And I know better than everybody else, and I know better than staff, and it has to be my way or no way. We have to put that aside. We have to work together as one body. The budget process is the budget process we're going through. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time that I read everything that I've been told, the CEO owns the budget.
No, the board owns the budget. Point of order. The board owns the budget, Mr. President, not the CEO. We vote on.
Point of order, Director Farrell. No more discussion on that. That is very disrespectful of treating the president of the RA board the way you do. End of discussion. There is no more discussion. Please, done. We are done. We need to vote.
There was her second.
Are we voting on the motion to reconsider?
Director Santa had a motion to reconsider, and Director Dodd, you seconded that.
Am I allowed to withdraw my second? Because that's what I'm inclined to do.
Please.
Can I ask a question up to Tony? The motion to reconsider is to say, hey, this thing that just passed is no longer going to pass. And then can I amend that motion to say, yes, submit all of the things that are in here, but make sure you really exclude the county stuff? And do one more last round of fact-check.
Okay, so what would happen is you vote on this motion. This motion is to reset it to immediately prior to the vote that was taken on the main motion. At that point, you would offer an amendment that would need to be seconded, and then voted discussed, and then voted on for that one. So that amendment would be move to amend the main motion to direct staff to remove all items which are not RA-affiliated, or something along that lines. You would need a second, vote on that, and then you'd have to vote on the main motion again.
I like that. Thank you.
Director Dodd, did you, did you have a comment? Did you want to pull?
I guess I will let my second of her motion stand so that we can have a vote on whether to reconsider this.
All right. We're ready to vote. Those in favor of the motion to reconsider as presented by Director Santa, say aye.
Aye.
We have one, Director Dodd, Flashman, Director Farrell, Director Santa, Director Johnson, Director Justjak, I can't.
Can't see Justjak and Perry.
Yes, I said aye.
I'm sorry. Thank you. And then we have those in, those against?
Nye.
Director Perry, Grywicz, and three, six to three, the motion passes.
May I amend the original motion to?
Did she vote to reconsider? I don't. I didn't hear you.
Yes.
I had my hand.
Six, six, six to three.
Can you read your original motion? Or does somebody, Brittany, does somebody have it written down? What was your original motion? Is to send as-is, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion to read, please send this to committees. However, staff, please remove the things that don't belong to committees that are not RA property so that committees never have to review them.
Director Santa, what I believe I heard you say was that you move to amend the main motion to instruct staff prior to sending the list to committees to remove all items which are not under RA's jurisdiction.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Director Farrell. Any discussion?
For discussion?
Yes.
Is that, was that not part of the assessment that the staff was asked to do to come up with this? It was not?
Was not clear. I think we're clarifying that here.
And I think, and I don't know whether it is, many questions, when you ask them of different people, you come up with different answers. And so when we ask the staff to take a look and remove those that are not within RA authority, their answer may be different than the answer that would be given by some others sitting at the table. And so, you know, it's a worthy effort, but it will not remove the fact that we will have some conflict over that. So given that, I would support the motion, understanding it doesn't solve the full problem.
Director Johnson, you have your hand up?
I do. How long do we expect this to take? The full assessment and then sending it out to the committees?
I will offer, we can get that done tomorrow. But I have all sorts of questions for clarity. I can certainly offer some perspective on what we did and why we did.
Let me hear what our CFO wanted to say. He was about to say something.
I was actually going to say the same thing. Our CEO said that I think we can get it done by tomorrow if he agrees. And just a point of clarification, I mean, we definitely erred on the side of moving these forward. I mean, we didn't think it was our place to say, nobody could look at them. So, you know, we definitely erred in that way. And just a reminder, the next step is really the committees would just say, yes, take a look at it, or no. And we recommended you ask them to give them a high, medium, low priority. So that's really all the committee would do. And then the next meeting is when you, you know, really be evaluating which to move forward with pricing.
Thank you.
I just have, just a sense, we're talking about clarification. I would, as you vote on this, we really want to understand. So for example, if somebody had suggested we make physical improvements to an FCPA park, we pulled that out, I believe, should that happen. But if somebody suggested, even if they were erroneous, let's use the environmental thing, like, hey, RA used to be in the recycling business, and we want to bring that back. We left that kind of thing in because maybe the EAC would say, well, we don't do that. But maybe we should suggest the board consider working with a CAO or CFO on a recycling program. Maybe we do a recycling day, and something should be put into the budget for that. So we did not scrub those out because frequently those can lead to good committee conversations. If it's something we could be in. Maybe somebody meant to propose a new business line and just didn't know. So.
I'd like to react to that because I want to get to specifics to set the general tone of this, and I think my peers may agree with this. Somebody proposed a public grass amphitheater, and you're talking about Wheelie and Reston Town Center.
I'm sorry.
Second page, first one.
Category is?
Environmental. It's the second page. Yep. And my, yep, and my point being is, that has nothing to do with Reston Association. But it is not in the staff comments clear that our position is, good idea, not part of RA. And I think that's what I think some of the board members are trying to get at, that it's good idea, not part of RA. Just scrub it out.
So I think I might be, just if I'm reading this correctly, that one's got a box, an X in the box that says none. That is proposed to be scrubbed out.
So. Meg, I also have to admit, that column was not clear to me. But just leave it at that. None what? None, didn't know.
Guys, I gave you the numbers. I told you it was 34. And if there's, if it's, okay, if it's going to a committee, it's got the committee X.
Are we ready to vote? Yes, yes.
If I could just clarify, I mean, as the memo says, but I'll just reiterate, none indicates the staff does not recommend any committee review, and the suggestion should not be considered by the board of directors in the 11 July board of directors meeting. So that's what the.
Okay, we're ready to vote now. Thank you.
Hey, I have a comment.
Director Justjak, yes.
For clarification from my perspective and direction to staff, the items that I think that should be removed are on line seven, 11, 13, and 43.
That is not helpful.
The staff have the line items, and it's not set in stone. It's my opinion as to the ones that should be removed.
We don't know which numbers you're talking about.
The staff can note line item seven, 11, 13, and 43, and take under advisement that my opinion is that they are not related to RA. If someone else has some that are not, it is my opinion. That's all it is. It's not set in stone in this motion.
Okay.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Director Farrell?
I think, I think what, Director Dodd, I wanted to follow up on your comment. I think what Director Dodd was trying to accomplish was, we can't, sitting here, follow the numbers you're referring to. That's, if you heard a commotion, that's what the commotion was. And so if there's a way that you could direct us to the line items there, concerned about maybe using the category
Category.
might help the body know which items you're referring to because we don't have numbers on the.
They're on the screen.
Yes, I understand that, but it's not, it's not part of the motion, and I'm happy to go under, over them. I was trying to be brief because it was just my opinion for staff to take into consideration. But line item seven is to replace the Lake Throw dock at Upper Lake Drive. The glass recycling, as has been mentioned by other board members, the grass amphitheater. And 43 is finish the sidewalk along North Shore across from Temporary Road.
Mr. Chairman, I believe those would be motions to amend the restated motion.
Right. So what do we have? Four motions?
In order to move the night along, I'll second that motion.
So we're amending that.
I am not in position to vote on a motion that I do not understand precisely which.
Okay. Director Perry, you have your hand up?
I would just like to point out that had we gone with the original motion, we would be much further along in this meeting. And our committees would have probably taken, as Director Grywicz pointed out, much less time to deal with this. Also, as has been pointed out by our CFO and CEO, a number of these things were already not being moved forward. But, you know, we didn't ask questions about columns. We didn't understand. We've asked the questions. We now understand why. Why are we still hashing out piecemeal by piecemeal by piecemeal? Please, please. We are not an operating board. We are a governing board. And this line item second guessing is a constant disrespect to staff, our committees, and honestly, our time.
Thank you.
Send an email, and let's move on.
Thank you. We have a motion here.
We have an amendment first.
Yes, we have an amendment, of course. Do we have one amendment, or do we have five amendments here? Just one.
One with five elements.
With five elements in it, yes.
I don't understand. So I'm going to ask that the motion be repeated, perhaps. I don't understand which five elements those are.
Director Justjak, would you like to state your amendment?
Can I request that you specify these by telling me which category it falls under, and then moving?
Line item seven is an environmental one, and it says, replace unsafe dock on Lake Throw at Upper Lake Drive, going to the PRAC committee. Number two is under environmental. Item 11, bring back glass recycling, going to the environmental committee. 13, environmental, public grass amphitheater, under the category of none.
But that was, okay, so that was already not going to a committee.
And 43 is playgrounds/paths. That says, finish the sidewalk along North Shore across from Temporary Road. That says, finish the sidewalk along North Shore across from Temporary Road going to Prac.
Who is the person who suggested that on playgrounds?
Joshua Butler.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, you've got that as number 43?
Line item 43 on the original spreadsheet.
So, I don't understand why you would include in the motion something that has already been designated as not going to a committee. Which would be number 13. Number 13, the public grass amphitheater, has already been said it's not going to a committee. And so, calling it out for special attention in this motion is not effective. It does nothing.
My understanding is they would be removed for the amended motion.
And what to you is the difference between removing it or sending it to no committee?
They don't come back to the board in July.
I'm sorry?
They don't come back to the board in July. So, they're less for us to deliberate on in July as well.
Clarification from Ed, please?
Yeah, yeah. Just a clarification, any of those with the none column, we were recommending not going forward to in July or to committees. So, they're gone.
So, it is the same?
We just didn't delete them so you could see them, but we've already recommended they not move forward anymore.
I appreciate that you went on and sent them to us so we can see them.
Right.
Director Jess Jack, did you pick up on our CFO's clarification?
Yeah, now that I understand that the none column means that they're not coming back to the board, that I don't believe the board has directed that the none column not come back to the board. And I actually have things in the none column that I would be a yes on. So, that, that was not my understanding of the none column. My understanding of the none column is it just wasn't going to a committee.
Our intention was that we can go forward in July as well. So, we would...
So, Ed, just one more time. So, hang on, guys. One at a time, please. There's cross-talk here and we need to just make sure that everybody understands this. Please, go ahead.
Sorry, just trying to clarify again. When we marked it none, we intended for that not to go to any committees and not to go forward in the July meeting. So, if you want to change that, you know, we could change that. But that was our intention and recommendation there.
Okay. So, the none means this was just offered to the board as for awareness. It's not going to a committee number one, and it's not going forward July 11.
Is our recommendation.
That's, that's your recommendation.
And I would propose a second amendment that says that the none, the column items come back to the board in July.
No.
Tony?
I believe what I heard Director Jess Jack say in her amendment, that the none co, move that the none column items be stripped from the existing spreadsheet and brought back to the July board meeting without being sent to the committees. Point of order, Mr. President.
Hang on just one second. What would be the purpose of doing that?
So, you've got a, the way I'm seeing this, you take those out, then you go to Director Santa's motion that still has to be voted on, which says, staff, strip out anything in the remaining things that might have been going to committees that we don't do. And then you vote on Trevor's motion up here, which says, send the remainder as is to the committees.
What about Director Jess Jack's amendment then?
That strips out, it takes, instructs staff to take it out of the spreadsheet entirely, put it in a separate spreadsheet to bring back.
But the bring back, no, you're assuming the bring back.
Mr. President.
Director Farrell, please, go ahead.
I could, where'd you go?
Director Johnson has had his hand up.
I will go to you in just a moment, Director Johnson.
I have a point of order and a suggestion for, for Parliament, for clarification. And if I'd just gone down the list, we might be, been my list, we might have been done by now.
I agree.
Yeah. But I tried to avoid that. And that, every good deed will go punished.
Of course.
The second issue that Director Jess Jack has is a new amendment. And I would, I would recommend to her that we not act on that amendment until we act on this other amendment that's pending, that takes out seven, 11, 13, and 43. And then return to Director Jess Jack after that vote and then vote on her next idea. And that would make our minutes a lot clearer, which is always an objective.
Happy to. Happy to wait until after this vote.
Thank you.
On the amendment.
Thank you. Director Johnson, you've had your hand up. Please, go ahead.
I have, but any of my comments now are OBE and superfluous.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Director Grywacz, did you?
Just vote, yeah.
Yes, we're ready to vote. So, please, for clarity, can you repeat the motion, please?
We're voting on her motion.
Yes.
Motion was to remove from the spreadsheet line items seven, 11, 13, and 43.
So, it's not clear to me. I thought the motion was to send them all as is with the exception of these four. Did I misunderstand?
You've restated her motion perfectly.
Well, she didn't say the first part.
She just said the amendment.
It's just the amendment.
Oh, just that was, she was just articulating the amendment.
Yes, she was the, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second for that?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Director Flashman?
No.
No. Okay, so we've got Director Dodd, Director Jess Jack, Director Johnson, Farrell, Santa, Grywacz, and myself. And those against, we've got Director Flashman and Director Perry. This motion carries seven to two. Okay.
I motion, I motioned what Tony said, to remove the none column from the spreadsheet and bring those items back to the board in July.
Second.
You're seconding that?
Sorry.
My apologies. My apologies.
And I, I will state the reason. One is because I went through the list as, I went through the list and there are things that I believe we should consider as a board that are in the none column. And I believe that until the board deliberates on member comments or budget suggestions, we shouldn't remove anything from the list as to the points that Director Perry made earlier.
Okay. Yes.
It was my understanding that one of the things we were accomplishing tonight would be to remove some things from consideration so that we don't bring them up at future meetings and thereby paring down the list to a more manageable agenda that we can't address intelligently. And so, I was under the impression and would favor a vote that would pull out some of these as not to be considered further by this board. Not to be...
Wow.
Not to be carried on. Never mind. That's what I meant. That is what I meant.
Was there a second, was there a second for Director Jess Jack's motion? Was that Director Farrell who seconded that? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I see Director Farrell, Director Jess Jack. Those against? See Director Dodd, Flashman, Santa, Grywacz, Director Johnson, Director Perry. I can't see, so just... That motion fails.
Now, you have the original motion on the floor.
So, we're now back to the original motion.
Well...
With one amendment.
With one amendment.
Then I will motion to, to...
No, if there's a motion on the floor, let's clarify the motion that's on the floor and vote on it. It's not appropriate to bring another motion now.
Yes, it is.
I'm motioning to amend the motion on the floor. And I'll happily go through all of the ones that I think that we should consider if you want me to go line item by line item.
So, point of order, can I request a biology break for this meeting at this point, two and a half hours in?
Yes, you can. We will have a five-minute intermission here. We will reconvene at eight minutes, nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay, we're back. And Director Justack, you were about to, again, was it a motion or amendment? I can't, it was an amendment, correct?
It is.
Thank you, go ahead.
I believe, motion to amend, to leave on the list, the board list for consideration in July, item number two. Please consider ensuring the discount prices for camps for RA members is more significant.
I'm sorry, number two, what?
Camps.
To leave it on.
Camps. Yes, all the ones that I'm going to list are ones I'm motioning to leave on the list.
Before we go down this path.
Line item two.
Just, just real quickly, would you also recommend it going to Prac? Since it is a camp related, like, are we sending it to committee? Are we just holding on to it? And it's not going to be evaluated by committee? Okay, fair enough.
I agree with staff that it will be part of the fee assessment effort, but that's part of the budget. So I believe that it should be left on the list.
Okay.
So Director Justack, was it number two? Or were there other ones?
It's line item two. Line item three. Please consider using the Lake House as a meeting place for camps instead of Brown's Chapel. I would ask the staff why they don't think that that's budget related. Because it would affect our ability to sell space on an hourly basis at Lake House. So to me, it would be, it might reduce Lake House's revenue. So to me, it is budget related.
Okay.
So you're saying that you want that idea to persist into the future discussion? The idea of using the Lake House?
Correct. Correct.
So you have items two and three?
Yes, line item nine is under environmental. And it says, the request is to bring EV charging stations to Ruston. And the staff say, we're already doing it. Which we have budgeted in, in, in the, this year's budget, I believe it is, to, but we also have had a member make that request that Director Patraine brought us before he left the board. That the staff were investigating. So to me, that falls in line with something that we've asked the staff to investigate would be budget related for 2025. Line item nineteen, which is finance, by a former Director Patraine, is asking for us to consider changing the calendar year for RA. And I'm not sure why it wouldn't be under consideration. But we can't add it to staff, to fiscal's work plan without the board making that direction. Because we already approved their work plan.
Okay, is there more?
Line item twenty-seven is Hunter Woods Shopping Center. And that it's been badly neglected. And I believe that there are things that.
I'm sorry, what's the category?
It is other. Hunter Woods Shopping Center. And I believe that there are things that we could, as a board, consider related to that.
I'm sorry, what number did you assign to that?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, Hunter Woods Shopping Center. We could direct staff to work with the owner to make that, you know, property better.
As part of the budget?
Um, yes, I, I, I agree with you, Trevor. That may or may not be part of the budget. But if we drop it from a list entirely, it's gone.
Okay.
Do you mean, you know what I mean, from our purview? Line item thirty-one is RA staff to enter into a contract with a broker to potentially look at new space. And it does say the staff will do. But that may require money. And I believe it should require direction from the board as to whether it would be on a future work plan. Line item thirty-two, RA headquarters space for remote work. We already rent out our facilities. So I think that it would behoove us to potentially look at what the cost would be to add that as a potential option. Especially given that we have a lot of members that work remotely. And it is a trend that has started across the region. Line item fifty-one is under pools. And it's rentals, use a tiered system for party rentals at pools. And I believe that that would affect the budget if we made a tier system. But I believe it could also go into the fee process, fee assessment process that Mr. Lusk is working on.
Should.
For party rentals for pools.
Should fifty-one go to Prac?
I would say if fifty-one's going to go to Prac, then that one earlier that with camps and fees could go to Prac, I mean, to me, I'd, yes, it could go to Prac, sure. Or it could go to staff for just the tier assessment project that they're already working on. Line item fifty-nine is probably the one that I have the biggest. That is called tennis/pickleball. And it's tracking court usage through the use of a swipe entry system. And we are not doing that on our courts. I've talked to Director Lusk about my, it's going to be on my list regardless whether you guys approve it or not. I, I will put it on my director list because it's one I'm very interested in.
Staff comment say they're already doing. So do you want to, can I get clarity on why you wrote that?
Just very briefly, we're looking into what a pilot program might cost based on conversations that we've had. So I think, I think it's right to keep it moving forward, but we're, we're working on it actively.
So it shouldn't be in the non-column, okay.
I'm sorry, first of all, it shouldn't be in the non-column?
Correct.
So I'm losing the meaning of what I thought staff meant by checking something in the non-column. Because we were told if it's in the non-column, it's not going to move forward as part of the budget process. But you're telling, you're saying it is under consideration. So it is going to be part of.
Or exists somewhere else. So there are a number of ongoing initiatives that you've already asked for. So we will duplicate that work and bring it to you in multiple places.
So this is meant to be new dollars of things that have never been considered? Staff's recommendations are that these are new things that have never been considered. And what we're discussing are things that are possibly going underway, but we just don't want to lose sight of. Is that what the conversation is bottling to? Mac, do you want to respond to that?
Like, your rationale for this is that it's all new, even though it says, we're already doing that. Just so that everybody understands your system.
I think our intent, I'll look down to Ed, was list management. You know, if these things are showing up in several different places and you're making decisions about the same item at multiple different meetings, that can be very confusing pretty well. These are members' suggestions. Some of which we didn't think were applicable for all the reasons some of you have alluded to. Maybe we shouldn't have them on the list. And some are duplicative and are happening in other places.
But if, if someone objects that a particular item is listed as a no here, they're objecting to the idea that it shouldn't go forward. And you're saying that that no could mean it's going forward, but in a different project, a different category. So this use of the columns makes our voting process very difficult and vague.
Are we going to send active staff work to committee for them to evaluate? No, because they don't, we wouldn't care what they had to say. Staff is already doing the work. That's what the sheet is for. It's for what is going to committee. And so we're not going to take ongoing and active work.
Except that it's also for what is going to be discussed later on in the budget process. And if the staff is doing something, and so you may say it doesn't need to go to the committee, but it still has financial implications that have to be discussed by the board.
And they would, my points aren't getting across today, so I'll, I'll sit this one out. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Is there a motion on the table?
Hold on just a second, hold on, hold on.
Yeah, it's been going, it's been going for the last fifteen minutes.
Okay, point of order here. Director Justack, are you finished?
I have two more.
Please go ahead and finish.
Line item sixty-one. I'm still, I'm still doing the, I'm still saying the motion instead of saying line items. Yeah, they, they asked me to be more descriptive.
Thank you for clarifying.
Line item sixty-one is called tennis/pickleball. And it says, the suggestion is that some of the courts could be converted to a tennis wall. And I believe that would be budget related. In fact, I think it would be capital budget related. And that there are large cracks. And I believe that's something staff needs to evaluate and bring back to us. That they looked at the, the cracks as part of their capital suggested budget items. Which hopefully they do regularly, but still, it's member suggestion. And then line item sixty-five, tennis/pickleball.
Of the maker of the motion?
Yes.
That, that change that you want to make, would you then suggest that that goes to Prac?
Sure, yeah, that would be great. That makes sense. And then line item sixty-five, which is tennis/pickleball. It talks about the introduction of pickleball, but it specifically says, to enable all play, money should be budgeted to market the idea that pickleball courts are open to all residents. And every resident is required to follow the rules. It's kind of towards the middle of that and the reason why.
When you say, all right, so tennis/pickleball, can you just tell me the first few words of the paragraph?
Sure. Sure. Third one from the bottom, line item sixty-five, while I appreciate the introduction of pickleball courts.
Thank you.
Got it. And about three quarters or two-thirds of the way down that, there's a sentence that says, to enable all play, money should be budgeted. And that's why I would add that one back to the list. And I'm sorry if I was unclear. I believe that through the break, before the break, my understanding was that the non-column meant that none of those were coming back to the board. And that's why I am motioning to add all of, to, to take those off the non-list so that they do stay under the board's purview. And I would ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion. So.
I'm not comfortable voting on a package deal.
It's an amendment. Yeah.
I'm, I'm just going to vote against this motion, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion here? Yes, Director Fleishman?
She is proposing to have all of these brought back at some point.
July eleventh.
Correct.
Some would be referred to committees. There's three that would be referred to Prac, is what I have captured.
Yeah. Discussion. Thank you. Yeah, Director Perry?
It's not worth it, you all will vote against me anyway. Never mind.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Travis.
Director Johnson, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable voting for the whole package, not to question anything that Jennifer said. She may be correct. I would however, like additional time to review all of her comments in a document that could be an Excel spreadsheet that I would have sixteen hours to review at this point.
Okay, thank you. Let's vote. Those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
I count Director Justack, Director Farrell, did you say aye? Yes, you did. And those against? I count Director Dodd, Fleishman, Crywatch, Director Johnson, Director Perry, Director Santa Epstein. That motion carries. I'm sorry, that motion, I apologize. That motion fails. The amendment fails, thank you. We're back to the original motion as presented by Director Santa, as I recall, at this hour, correct?
The motion is, send, please remove items that have nothing to do with Ruston Association property and send this to committee.
In the judgment of the staff?
In the judgment of staff.
There's also an amendment attached to it, which was approved, which is eliminating items seven, eleven, thirteen, and forty-three.
No, that was. That's already part of the, Mr. President.
Yes.
That's already part of the main motion, we've already approved that. So this is another amendment to add to the main motion. That's what we're voting on.
Yes. Again, just for clarity, could you repeat the motion again? I sense confusion a little bit here, so please.
The main motion, per Trevor, was, send this whole entire document as is to committee. My amendment to that original motion is, send this to committee, but please remove all items that have nothing to do with Ruston Association and are related to county matters. That is my motion. That's what we're talking about.
Are outside the authority of Ruston Association? Would that be an acceptable wording?
Sure.
Authority.
So you're going to ask unanimous consent?
Unanimous consent.
But it includes, but it includes seven, eleven.
Correct, but that's already.
Her motion now includes the numbers that we approved.
Right.
Yes, that's right.
And could include others that the staff identify.
Is everybody clear on this amendment?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Director Perry?
Nay.
Nay. Have Director Dodd, Fleishman, Farrell, Santa, Crywatch, Johnson, yeah, and then, I'm sorry.
Johnson's nay.
Johnson is nay. Director Perry is nay. The motion carries, thank you.
I'm sorry, let's, I'm sorry, for the record, Johnson abstained, Johnson did not.
I'm sorry, Director Johnson abstained, thank you. Motion carries, or the amendment carries. So where are we now?
I have one more question for staff before we finish this topic.
Yep, go ahead.
Mac, I believe that you were working on a method in which you wanted the, the directors to submit budget requests. Have you come up with that?
Yes, Director Justack, I think we had communicated before that the best way to do that is to email Ed. You can copy myself, too. We just want to make sure we categorize them because at the time we were having some, they were coming through the member suggestion process from board members. So a simple email will be fine. We just want to make sure that we put them into a separate pot of just board member suggestions.
I'd just like to.
Thank, thank you, yes. Director Johnson?
Thanks. And thank you, Director Farrell, as well. May I suggest that instead of doing email, because I'm really concerned about what the effort of compiling is going to happen, was, is going to do in the translation, can we have, like, a spreadsheet that we can complete? That we can all share? So all of the information is in a single format? And perhaps it could eliminate some questions later down the road? For instance, the board could pre-populate the committees to which their suggestions should go. Well, actually, no, they wouldn't, because they wouldn't go to a committee at this stage, would they? Okay.
Already passed that timeline.
Right. So instead, I, even so, I would still appreciate it if we can have a working form in which we can enter the data, so it stays at least constrained into a single format.
Okay, I can email something.
Okay, thank you.
I would like, my opinions have already been put in the normal spreadsheet. I do not have the capacity to rewrite in any new spreadsheet. So please feel free to copy and paste what I've already provided.
Thank you, Margaret, that's a good catch. So just as a clarification, some of you have already submitted and they came through the member suggestion process. We pulled those out, which is why you don't see them tonight. They're already on a separate document. Travis, we will work on a centralized location, again, for how we can organize all this. Whatever's the easiest way for board members to get things in, we'll make that for you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much, guys. Hopefully, we can move forward to the next item on the agenda. Director Johnson, I believe that's yours.
No, but did we, did we vote on Director Santa and then on the main motion?
We did.
We only did Director Santa, we didn't do Trevor's main motion.
What was the reconsideration, Travis?
No, no, he's right, he's right. Yeah. All in favor of the main motion? Please say aye. Yes, yeah?
It needs to be repeated at this point.
Come on.
It's just, it's just passing the sheet along.
The main motion is.
"Pass staff recommendation with the consideration of stripping out items that are outside RA's authority, but include, or no, remove items seven, eleven, thirteen, and forty-three." Did I capture that?
You did. Thank you. Um, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Director Perry?
Aye.
Uh, Director Johnson? Director Johnson, what say you?
Aren't you, I say nay. That's not the process we typically do, but okay.
Okay, that motion passes eight to one. Director Perry, correct me if I'm wrong, you said yea, correct?
I said yea gradually.
Thank you. Thank you.
For that to be, to the minutes exactly that way.
That motion passes. Thank you. Let's move forward. At nine twenty-five, we are ready for Director Johnson to talk about RA interaction with developers in Reston. All yours.
Thanks. So, you know, on April twenty-fifth, I raised a motion that, directed RA staff to conduct planning activities with the end goal of engaging with those Reston communities that are not currently RA members. These planning activities should include, but should not be limited to, feasibility and return on investment analysis of implementing this plan, identifying and documenting communication channels through print and social media, initiating direct correspondence and scheduling meetings with developers and their attorneys, and engaging residents of non-member communities. RA staff will be, will be required to submit monthly progress reports to the Board of Directors. Planning activities should be finalized by June thirty, and should include an actionable implementation plan. The discussion, after talking with staff, um, you know, we determined that staff is doing some of these activities and I'm excited about that. However, uh, you know, we definitely don't think that, uh, June, you know, June thirty is a good date. So staff requested that I move the date in my motion to July eleven, and I am perfectly fine with that.
I think there was one thing on our end. So one of the things, I was not at that meeting, so, so Peter offered that there were some things that we wanted to follow up with Director Johnson to get some better clarity, to understand what that, what the ask was. So for example, when I reviewed the tape and heard the term "return on investment," I was assuming that there was a financial component to this. We had a chance to sit down with Director Johnson. We talked through those sorts of issues. The ask is, if we were to dedicate staff time largely in the executive office to putting together a game plan for how we could start to approach some communities already built, not, not like proposed developments. That has a whole separate process with proffers and things, right? But things that already exist. And the classic example for me is like a deep wood, right? And we wanna start socializing the idea of more formally as an association reaching out to these entities. What might that look like? And do we think, um, there would be value in that? So to me, that was a very different concept than what my initial assumption was. Well, we're doing an assessment, analysis, and all sorts of things. So, um, that's why you see some of the comments that we had in there. We do think generally, um, the idea, you've all talked about wanting to get more units into this association. We could certainly find some time. Um, I think we should talk about expectations management. I mean, it's effectively a cold calling exercise, but one that we haven't really done in the past, you know, other than informally. So anyways, that, that was important for us to understand what was being asked.
Thank you. So Director Johnson, at this point, what is, what is the, uh, ask? Is this to, are you asking to amend the date?
Yes.
Can you, well, go ahead and make that move?
Oh, I'd like to move that we amend the date in my previous, uh, motion from June thirty, twenty twenty-four to July eleven, twenty twenty-four. The rest of the text would remain as it-
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Director Farrell?
Oh, I thought you were, your hand was going up. Okay, go ahead.
I guess-
I defer to you.
I would be interested to know, when this proposal, when this motion was first being proposed, my reaction to it was, our staff is already doing these things. They don't need a motion from the board to tell them how to do them, and that this is an example of micromanagement by the board. And so my question for our staff, our CEO, is whether or not he supports this motion based on his conversations with Director Johnson that clarified what it meant.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that question, Lori. Um, I, on its surface, I don't think there's a motion, you know, necessary here. I think from a work planning standpoint, the board asking a question of, hey, is this something we could do? And, you know, how could you fit it into the work plan? It was a good question to ask, particularly as a group, as we're talking about implementing this idea of getting new, you know, members in, if at all possible. I think the reason, um, I suggested, let's have another conversation about it tonight, is more an expectations management. So i- if the idea is, let's talk to every unit in the TSA, you know, and, and all the other ones on the periphery, like, we couldn't do that in the next six months. But in terms of having work planning, no, I don't think you need a formal motion, you know, on this. But happy to take one, too. Just wanna make sure we're meeting expectations of the board.
Uh, Director Perry, you have your hand up?
Yeah, so, when this was raised, I was against it because as previously mentioned, staff was already on top of it. So, you know, you guys wanna extend a date for requiring staff to do something? Please feel free. I will be abstaining since I voted no on the original, um, motion anyway because again, we keep telling staff to do stuff that they're already doing, and it's not necessary.
Okay, thank you, Director Farrell.
I'm sorry, can, can I respond to the point? I'm sorry, or is, or is, am I out of line?
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to Director Johnson.
Thank you, Director Farrell.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, so to both Director Dodd and Director Perry, I think, I heard Mac say, when he provided additional, uh, comment on, well, my, my initial statement was that staff hasn't done this. Staff isn't doing this. Um, and he thinks a good idea for staff to do, to do this. So, you know, I wasn't asking staff to do something that they're already doing. Because I, I, I met with both Peter and Mac, and had they told me, you know, we're doing this, we don't need a motion, I would have withdrawn it. I'm, I'm not big on micromanaging. My understanding was that this is not an activity that they're currently undertaking and that they're open to exploring what the potential return on investment, by return on investment, I mean, just, you know, what would they get out of the effort would be. That's what I'm asking here.
Director Farrell?
Thank you. Um, I, I'm not aware to speak to prior, to the prior. I'm not aware, you know, during the year of my presidency, I was not aware of any conversations between any members of the staff and existing apartment owners or existing homeowners associations. Certainly, there, I go back through the, our, our minutes or our CEO updates, and there's no report of that. So I, 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 uh, maybe it was happening and we didn't know about it, but I, I'm, I was not certainly aware of it. I have a concern with your third bullet of your motion, Director Johnson, Mr. President. When it says developers and their attorneys, if I understand it, we're talking about existing residential projects, not residential projects that are yet in being. So we're really talking about apartment owners as opposed to developers? Because the conversation with the developers and their attorneys is going to be hopefully have going, happening at the Land use Advisory Committee. At least that's where, I, I, I'm seeing you nodding your head. I think that's where that conversation is appropriate. And so what I'm understanding you to encourage staff or want us to direct staff to do is to talk to the owners as an example of the EYA townhouses. Or the EYA now, they've turned it over. So there's a homeowners association at the EYA townhouses over on Wheelie and Sunrise, Sunset Hills. Get them mixed up all the time. Or the owners of the, uh, aperture apartments over near the, um, the Wheelie Metro Station. I believe that's what the, your, the direction that, you, have I got that right, Director Johnson?
Um, firstly, I'm glad I'm not the only one who makes a Sunrise/Sunset mistake, common, uh, commonly. Secondly, um, yes, that's exactly it, Director Farrell. Uh, yeah.
So one of the other things, um, if, if you would, if I could get unanimous consent to change it with developers and their attorneys to say, um, apartment owners or, and, and HOAs. So we, we don't have a situation where there's confusion as to who they're, we're expecting them to talk to. And if I can get unanimous consent to that amendment, I would appreciate it.
Would you mind if we said something along the lines of residents and their representatives?
I can't hear you.
Would you mind if we said something along the lines of, of residents and their representatives?
Well, in, um, in order for an apartment building to join us, it's the apartment owner who has to agree to join RA. Or it would be the homeowners association, in the case of the EYA project, that would have to join RA. So what I'm trying to get to is let's focus on the people who can actually make the decision to join RA. And that would be the owners of the apartment, the HOA, the condo association. That, that would be, because by the time the building is built, the developer's out of the picture. And so I wouldn't wanna be chasing after somebody who's left the building, you know. Elvis has left the building, no, no reason to chase them.
He didn't ask about, about developers, though. He asked, could it be a representative for the owner, which is not-
Yeah.
I, I'm happy with representative of the owner. That, that's fine.
Okay.
So if that's, if there's unanimous consent to change that-
To change it to-
From developers and their attorneys to representatives of the owners.
Did you not want HOA in there as well?
They would-
HOA would-
They are the right-
HOA would, would be the owner. So saying-
So, so it would be the same as saying apartment owners, HOAs, or their representatives.
Condos or the representatives. That's, that's fine. That's my, if there's unanimous consent to that change, Mr. President, we can move on. I don't see any objection.
Is there unanimous consent on that?
So that's, that change.
Yeah, thank you.
The other part of this, because I've been, um, as many members on this board know, this has been an ongoing theme of my conversations while I was president with Supervisor Alcorn. And one of the things that came up, and I would like to add this to this task, is that we have thirty existing apartment projects containing five thousand units, I think, is the number. Somebody can correct me, that are paying the fees. And we have three thousand who aren't. And one way of getting allies would be to be reaching out to the existing apartment owners who live, who already are paying the fees and get them to, uh, encourage, uh, their fellow apartment owners to join RA so that they're not subsidizing their competitors. I think that's an important element of any communication strategy, is to get allies. And so, um, I, I don't know that there's a, um, that in, in coming forward with your, with a plan, I, I'm asking that my fellow board members to agree that that should be part of the plan unless there's an objection.
Let me get Director Jess Jack, she's got her hand up first. Uh, just one second. Director Jess Jack?
I have no obje, I have no objection to what John just said. But I am supportive of the motion, and I will also note that we had five members that commented that this is something that they would like us to do in one form or another, which is to promote expanded membership. Thank you.
Back to you, Director Farrell.
I'm asking unanimous consent to add, uh, the existing apartment owners as part of the communication strategy.
Okay.
And so I'm asking, is there any objection to that?
Thank you. Before we get to that, I, I just wanna get a clarification from Director Johnson. My understanding on this, Director Johnson, was that you were asking to amend the date and also provide some context as to what this whole thing was about because you are, this motion was already passed. Am I correct on that?
We deferred it.
Right.
We never voted. We deferred this-
Thank you. Okay.
Because Travis wasn't at our meetings.
That's right. Thank you, Director Farrell. So is there unanimous consent for Director Farrell's, um, amendment, recommendation?
Change of wording.
Change. Director Perry? Director Perry, you have your hand up?
I, I, I do. I, I'm, I'm trying to be very judicious in my words. I absolutely, positively, one hundred percent agree that RA should be working with other Restonians, new development, the county, to get additional RA members. Hands down, period. One hundred percent. I am extraordinarily concerned that as usual, we are an operating board, right? Because we're constantly telling staff how to do things, when to do things, how, who to contact, who to this, who to that. That is not our job. And I am, I cannot continue to just sit back and allow us to be an operating board when that is not our position. Do I agree that we should, that RA should be working on these things? Absolutely. Do I think that staff has figured that out? A hundred percent. But the constant telling them when they have to provide exactly this, and here's who you contact, and here's who you talk to, and here's how you do it, that is an operating board which we are not. So no, I am, I am very leery to support any of these because again, we constantly cross a line.
Thank you. Uh, with that objection, so moved, I guess.
No, she objects.
She objects, yes.
So I have to, so I have to move-
You have to move to make a motion.
To amend the, to amend the item, to add, to add, uh, reaching out to the existing apartment owners in Reston to engage them as allies in this effort.
And that is your amendment?
I'm sorry, that is a fifth bullet point?
Um, I, I don't care where it goes. The, sure, make it a fifth bullet point.
So Director Farrell-
It has to be written.
Director Farrell, can you just clarify and repeat the amendment?
So to add an additional bullet point, thank you, Director Dodd, to, uh, to engage the owners of the existing apartment houses to support the effort to add, um, new residents, new, yeah, new dwelling units to the association.
Okay, having had enough discussion on that. In a second, all those in favor of the amendment, amended motion, say aye.
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 So we've got, uh, Dodd, Fleishman, Farrell, Santa, Crywatch, Johnson, uh, Jess Jack, and those against? Director Perry, I'm assuming you're against-
Abstain.
Abstain. Thank you. Amendment carries. Thank you.
Do we have to vote on the extension of the-
Yes, we have, right. Um, did, uh, somebody, did we have a motion? Did he make a-
Director Johnson moved this. I, mine was an amendment.
I know. We're back to the original, yes.
I made two amendments and they both passed.
I understand, but was there a second when he?
Yes, there was a second.
Who seconded it? I don't recall.
I think I did, but-
You did?
Yeah, I think so.
Just for clarity, would you mind seconding again?
I'll second. I'll second the motion as amended.
The motion is seconded as amended. Uh, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
And we've got, uh, Director Perry?
Abstain.
Abstain. So we've got eight and one abstained. That carries. Thank you.
If I could recommend-
Please, please go ahead.
Call out the names in cases of desire to reconsider.
Absolutely. Uh, those voting yea would be Director Dodd, Fleishman, Farrell, Santa, Crywatch, Johnson, and Jess Jack, and abstained was Director Perry.
Sorry, to be a stickler.
Good.
It just makes it a little-
Emma Par was a yes.
Emma Par was a yes.
Name yourself.
Yes. Thank, thank you, Jennifer. All right, at nine forty-five, we are ready for our executive session here.
Mr. President.
Director Farrell?
I move to convene an executive session to consider personnel matters, contractual matters, and consult, do we have contractual matters?
Yeah, we do.
And, no, I know that, but do we have a contractual- No, I know that, but do we have a contractual matter? I'm sorry, we do, we have one thing that just recently came out. We want to talk with you. For, to consider personnel matters, contractual matters, and consult with legal counsel.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Director Perry? All right, thank you, that's unanimous. All right. Take us into executive session, work factor two, please.
We have a cleansing motion?
Yep.
Mr. President, I move that the board of directors certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the only matters discussed in executive session were matters relating to personnel contractual matters and consult with legal counsel.
Say a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
He wasn't here.
Aye, that's unanimous, thank you.
Mr. President, I motion to extend tonight's meeting to 11:05 PM.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous, 11:05 it is.
I move to approve Mickey Moravitz for the position of member, for the position of member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Hold just one second, I want to make sure I get Director Perry, is Director Perry with us?
I am, is this the cleansing motion?
Thank you. No, no, we just, this is a motion on Mickey Moravitz.
Aye.
Thank you, that's unanimous.
I move to approve Julie Bitzer for, for the position of member, for an extension of her membership to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for three years.
For three years. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Director Perry?
Abstained.
I move, I move to approve Julie Bitzer for the position of chair to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Say a second. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Is that, I'm sorry, can we have some discussion first?
Discussion, yes.
And so, it's unclear to me, I understand that the term on the committee is a three year term, is the, I know that for our officers on the board, our officer positions are for one year, so is that the same for committee? It's a one year term as chair? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 We have Director Johnson, Director Crywarch, Santa, Dodd, myself, that is, Director Perry, that is, hang on, Director Perry, you have your hand up?
I voted yea.
Thank you, okay, that is, how many is that, six?
Six.
And those against? Farrell, Flashman, Director Justack, is that video frozen?
Two right now.
Okay, so we're good.
Go to the abstained.
And abstained? I don't think we have any abstained.
Abstained.
Justack, abstained, okay, so we have, six to one, that carries, thank you. Is that everything?
You got new business and you have?
Yeah, I know, but as far as the motions.
Mr. President, I move to adopt the agenda for the Thursday, June 27th meeting as presented in our materials.
Thank you, is there a second for that?
Second.
So, I apologize, I missed the motion, I apologize.
It's the motion to approve the agenda for the next meeting.
I just had two items that I wanted to add, just consent agenda, legal committee items that we don't have on there, and cluster quarterly update, which is coming up for us.
The cluster, cluster's there.
Is it?
I don't think it is.
If it's not, if it, I didn't see it when I read it.
It's not.
Hang on.
I don't have it.
DRB board?
Well, Cam already has it done.
DRB 101, is that what you consented with?
So that would be another Cam presentation, that would be a different Cam presentation. This is just that regular video that he does for us, explaining the outreach that he's done.
This is, we asked.
That is, what I am adding to the agenda is a clusterly quarter update, or, excuse me, a quarterly cluster update, we do this every quarter, Cam just puts it in a video for us, talks about his outreach efforts, everything that he's doing with the cluster.
Yeah, it's not here.
Correct, I'm asking to add it. Right, I've already, I said that the legal committee to the consent agenda would be the other item as well.
Adding it to the next agenda.
So, consent, legal committee, and the?
And a informational cluster item, that can be a video.
Cluster update?
Yes.
That's, that's an amendment.
Cluster quarterly update.
Yeah, and that would be item HI.
Traditional quarterly practice.
Yeah, HI, and then DRB 101 would be, no, HIJ, this is K, and, and the design review board 101 is L, and there would be a number five on the consent agenda for legal committee recommendations.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. President, do we have unanimous consent to those changes?
Is there any objection? Is there any objection to that? Please say no.
Those amendments are accepted, so we can vote.
That's unanimous, okay, so on adopting the agenda for the 27th, did I hear a second on that?
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, thank you. I believe we have accomplished everything.
We have new business?
Do we have any, we just went through the adoption of, that was a new business, the meeting agenda.
I have, I have more new business.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to request that an IT update be added to a future agenda, discretion of?
Thank you.
The president and, and CEO as to when they want to put it on, but ideally in the next couple of months.
Yep.
And I'd, and I'd like to motion to direct the staff to release a press release related to Reston Town Center North as discussed in executive session.
I just have a clarification question for you, Jennifer, on the IT, are you looking for like an IT committee work plan update, or like, we have things in the parking lot around the new website that are more like major IT projects that are coming back and looking for schedules, just making sure I'm clear on what you're asking for.
Sure, we used to get a quarterly update on the IT activities of the, of RA, that used to have met, you know, metrics of this is what we want to accomplish for the year, and here's where we are, so more like a CAM quarterly or recreational quarterly update, so not necessarily all committee related, but happy to, to hear about the committee stuff.
Okay, thank you, one item before we conclude here.
I have a motion and a second before?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Matt.
Go ahead.
Add a second to my motion before Matt asks.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, all those in favor, please say aye.
I'm sorry, you missed the process, she'd already moved, I'd already seconded.
Yeah.
And now we're voting, we're voting now.
All those in favor. All right, Director Dodd, Director Farrell, Director Santa, Crywarch, Justack, myself, and Director Perry, and, okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Director Santa, we had, are you?
We voted on the motion.
I know, but, the letter that we discussed.
I, we, I think we covered it with the press release statement, whether it's in a form of a letter that turns into a press release, but the concept has been carried, and I'm supportive of what has been outlined.
Do we need to have a motion?
Sorry, Director Santa, I didn't think you were going to do the motion, so, we just did, that's why I threw it.
That's what she just talked about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Justack.
Yep.
All right, having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much at 11 o'clock.